Before I call this meeting to order, I just want to say it's great to see everybody, even under this condition. I'm excited. I'm excited to see everybody back. So glad everyone's vaccinated and we're in the group and we're able to meet again. So, let's call this meeting to order. And then I'm going to go ahead and ask for roll call. Stacy.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Here.
Councilmember Sander?
Here.
Councilmember Budge?
Here.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Here.
Mayor Gatewood?
Here. Stacy, can you go ahead and read the playback recording schedules?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Wednesday, July 21st at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, July 23rd at 6:00 p.m. The meeting is closed captioned and is available, uh, sorry. The meeting is also available for view on the Metro Cable 14 YouTube channel. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department. And a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call on Diane Rogers, the President of Chamber of Commerce, to go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. Can everyone stand? If you could keep standing, we're going to have our invocation given by Elizabeth Brick.
Thanks for your patience, everyone. Mayor Gatewood and city council, thank you for inviting me. Please join me in prayer. We come to you Creator God, thankful for this day, for the opportunity to serve. We pray for our city, but we especially lift those in the ways of the wildfires on these days. We pray for our first responders and those who fight fires. We pray for those who are living still with COVID-19 and for those who have lost loved ones. This evening I pray for your blessing and guidance for each of our city council members, for their staff, and for all of the citizens who are gathered tonight. May we all be a blessing. This we pray in your many names. Amen.
All right. So we've quite a few new employees. I'm going to go ahead and call on Darcy, our planning manager, to introduce the new employees.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Darcy with the planning department. Tonight I have the honor of introducing Chance Finley-Ross. Chance comes to us from Michael Baker. He was a consultant that started with the city a few years ago. He worked in planning as well as doing some housing work. An opportunity arose to bring him in-house. So we are very fortunate to have Chance. He's a fast learner. He does a great job working on projects, plan checks, inspections. So with that, I will let Chance tell you a little bit more about himself.
Thank you, Darcy. And good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. As Darcy said, I'm Chance Finley-Ross. I'm the new assistant planner in the city planning department. I have been interested in planning for much of my academic and professional career. I look forward to just being a part of all these great projects that are on the horizon and those that are in progress as well. I also just want to say that the city team has been very supportive, very helpful of me in my time here so far. And they've just made that transition so much easier. So we really appreciate it. And thank you all so much for giving me the opportunity to meet you here. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, our community development director.
Mayor Gatewood and council members, Elizabeth Barkman, Community Development. And I'm very happy to reintroduce to you Erin Naderi. Erin has been working in the building and safety department, issuing building permits. She's had a focus on production homes, but she has accepted a new position as a management analyst. And I will be transitioning and teaching her some of the things that I do uniquely. She'll still be able to work with development, which she loves to do. And I've got a few years to teach her some tricks of the trade in new areas.
Mayor Gatewood and council members, I am very excited to be up here again, speaking with you. As somebody who grew up in the Rancho Cordova area, I am very, very passionate about new development out here. I'm really looking forward to helping all our new developers and learning everything Elizabeth will, can teach me as well, too. So I'm very excited and I want to thank everybody for this opportunity as well. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, Russ.
Well, good evening, Mayor Gatewood, council and staff. Russ Dushar, Neighborhood Services Manager, here to introduce a familiar face, another familiar face. We've had quite a few come through to Neighborhood Services here. Cave Cosman with the city for approximately 11 years. She's been working with us for about a year and a half and fully transitioned to our management technician in March of this year. She's been working on our contracts, RFPs, some of our programs that are data collections sensitive. And we're happy to have her. So please help me welcome Ca.
Good evening, Mayor Gatewood and council members and staff. I'm really excited to be here. I am super excited to be working with the Neighborhood Services team. And I just look forward to serving the community with my new position.
Welcome. All right, 5.2. Oh, Siri. Oh, one more? Oh. Come on it. Not on my paper. All right.
Mayor and council, I'm happy to introduce Adam Albrechtson. Adam asked me to read this to you. I am smart. I am hardworking. I have, I am polite. And I have a good moral compass. But honestly, Adam is intelligent. He's got a very good work ethic. He has a very good moral compass. And I think this is going to be a good addition to the city Rancho. It gives me hope with young people like this that have this much ability to make the city Rancho a much better place. So I'd like you to welcome Adam.
Thank you, Howard. It's an absolute honor to be in this city. I was working with four leave contracting with many different jurisdictions. And I have found that this one is by far the best and my favorite place to work. And Howard has put together a wonderful team that's extremely knowledgeable. I always have comfort going there for questions. And I'm extremely happy to be here. So thank you guys for this opportunity.
And Mr. Lindgram did ask me to provide preferential treatment to people that were named Adam. So thank you very much.
Welcome to the team. All right, 5.2. So someone turned 27 to July 6th. So let's go ahead. David, we're going to need you to sing. And sing, Siri, a happy birthday.
Oh, wow. We're going to do this remotely. Well, hopefully there's some other voices in the room that will, that will be better. So let's go. Are we ready? On the count of three. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Sir Pulipati. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. That got a lot better.
Now that we're almost good at that, we're almost done with it, right?
Yeah, exactly. All right. So this is public comment. So everyone that wants to comment, if you're going to comment about 19.2, let's save it for that. But if you have something else you would like to get on the public comment, this is the chance to get it out. Citizens wishing to address for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference, by completing or submitting a public speaker card to the city clerk, or if in public by teleconference by raising the hand feature at the bottom center of your screen. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, you're going to want to hit star nine right now. For those participating by Zoom or by telephone, please wait to be called upon by the clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called upon by the mayor at that point on the agenda when they will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments for three minutes or less and state the name and community of their residence. Under the provision of California State Government Code, the city is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on items not on the agenda unless it is to be determined of emergency nature and need to take immediate action right after the agenda. I'm going to go ahead and call on Stacy for the first one.
I'm sorry, which item did you say to hold off?
If it's going to be the 19.2, the civic center that we talked about, then you're going to want, 12.2, sorry. 12.2, you're going to want to wait until we bring that up. And that's when that one. But if you have something else you'd like to talk about, that's the time for that.
So first of all, somebody asked how many individuals have joined via Zoom. And I would just like to share that there's about 80 individuals via Zoom, if anybody has an interest. I was also asked how many individuals are here in the room. And I haven't exactly counted, but I'm guessing over 80, for those of you who are via Zoom. I did count up to 70 and I no more have joined us. And there might be more outside in the lobby or the overflow room. So if anybody's interested in those numbers, that is what I have estimated. For public comment, we do have three speakers who are here that have filled out speaker cards. We have a couple of individuals who have submitted emails for public comment. And we have a few that are here in Zoom with their hands raised, since this is a hybrid meeting. I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to call on the first speaker card that I received today, which is from Fiza Mugal. Fiza, if you'd like to come forward, you'll have three minutes to speak under public comment. And following Fiza will be Helen. And following Helen will be Greg.
Hi, I'm Fiza Mugal from Lincoln Village. I have two random public comments for today. First, I want to say to our Muslim community, Aib Mubarak. Secondly, I'd like to say that on Tuesday, June 22nd, I submitted a CPRA, California Public Records Act request. 14 days later, on Tuesday, July 6th, I sent a reminder to the clerk's office that my records request still had not received a response. A few days later, on Friday, July 9th, still having received no response from the city, I wrote to the city attorney reminding him of this delay and noncompliance with my records request. Today, 27 days later, I still have received zero information about the status of my request. I would like to remind you that access to information concerning the conduct of the people's business is a fundamental and necessary right of every person in this state. I would like my CPRA request to count as much as anyone else's. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiza.
Can I ask you a question? What was the public records request regarding? What was the question?
Well, the records request had to do with a public comment I had submitted and how I wanted to know the, the process of how that circulated internally and how a specific response came to be that I received from a city department head before a meeting took place, before my comment was entered into, you know, posted for the public to have access to. So I wanted to understand the process behind that. But I, my understanding is I don't really have to state why I'm seeking the information that you guys just.
I wasn't asking why. I was asking, what was the specific request? Was it specific documents relating to what matter? Is what I'm asking.
Yeah. So it has to do with the way that my comment was processed internally. So any documents relating to how my comment was circulated beyond the original recipients, how it ended up in communications hands, and then how a message was crafted that went out in response to the comment that was received.
Okay, thank you.
I can send it to you later if you want to see the full body of the request.
Hey, Fiza, follow it with me.
Pardon me?
Follow it with me.
Follow it with you?
Follow up with me.
I'll follow up. Gotcha. I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Adam.
Sure. The city clerk's office does track and consults with the city attorney's office on all Public Records Act requests that come in. We do make every effort to carefully track each of them. I think we have an outstanding record of responding as a team on time with a response within the statutory timelines. There are some records requests that come in that are very, very voluminous, meaning that, that providing responsive records to them for, certain of our individual requests might, for single requests, take 10, 15, or more hours of staff time. So there is a bit of a distinction sometimes between providing a response to a Public Records Act request and providing all of the records that are actually requested. We'll certainly work with the city clerk's office on point. We'll work with folks to respond to and help them narrow their requests. Sometimes that will make information get to folks faster. There is also a collective effort underway to proactively push out as much information as possible onto the city's websites and other sources so that the public can get information at one click rather than needing to wait for and file a Public Records Act request. And I think the last thing I would say is, we through our entire life as a city have really encouraged an active and open conversation with the community at all levels of the organization. I'm sure that I can speak for the city manager in this regard. And some of the requests we're getting are not really requests for documents per se, but they're simply questions about operations or other issues. And I know I speak for all my colleagues in, in department head positions that we have an open door to and, and fully intend to be responsive to the public. But just answering your questions, sometimes people aren't actually interested in, they're, they're sending Public Records Act requests, but what they really have is just a question. And I know all of my colleagues in department head positions and from the city manager's office on down are, are welcome to help answer the public's questions, sometimes not by handing them a document. So we'll be happy to look into this and double check our spreadsheets and see if anything happened. I do remember the request. Being noted, I remember there being some discussions about it. And we'll certainly be happy to follow up as a team to make sure that it's timely responded to. We care about every single request that's made to the city.
Excellent. Adam, just follow it with me so I can follow it with Fiza. All right, who's next?
Okay, I'm going, I'm going to modify what I was going to talk about. I agree with Fiza about the information request. I've submitted numerous of them. The latest one, I got back seven days afterwards with no information pri, provided to me within the 10 days to explain why it was going to be late. I have a document that looks like this in real print, but when I see it, it only has this much because it was printed in portrait, not landscape, to give to me. I also have a document that is fully dedacted. Kind of interesting because when I, there was no explanation under the law that requires it to be, to explain to me why it was dedacted. When I have documents from Sacramento County, from the legal department, they're not dedacted. Or if they are, they explain why. So I agree with Fiza. There's much needed to be done because the city has been really behind in responding. And I'm still waiting for Cyrus's response from the fall. And Adam was on it too. And I, we did a second request and neither one of you have responded to that. So it's a little frustrating. The other thing that frustrates me, you're giving us the exact same stuff that's on your website. Under the request for information, we have a right to all documents. And if any person working for the city uses any of their own personal devices, whether it be cellphone, whether it be computer, that item now becomes public record. That is the San Jose, the recent thing filed in San Jose that fined the city big bucks for failing to provide all information. With that said, I'm not getting any of those emails. And the few emails I get, I'm not getting the ones that I submitted to you guys. Or I'm not getting the documents that I personally have handed to you folks. So there's a real problem we have with the public information request. If you spent as much time and effort on the public information documents that would be available that was spent on the interactive budget program, maybe we'd have something great. And when you go to some of the other cities around and you want information, you just click on stuff. Most of your information can be found on that website. It's, you're required, if, no different than if you were under litigation hold, you're required to retain all documents. So this selective losing of documents or not providing them to the different people has got to stop because it's against the law. So let me get back to what I signed up for. I signed up for, talking about the city. When this city became a city, it was built on the back of what is old Rancho Cordova. When you became a city, you have turned your blind eye to the people that made it a city. For the reasons the city became a city was because Sacramento County wasn't providing.
Your three minutes are up.
Okay, fine. No problem.
The next speaker is Greg Wentworth.
Mayor, council members, thank you for your time. I'm an original resident of Stone Creek since 2001. I live right next to Zinfandel Boulevard on Trefethan Court. When Kaufman and Broad built their Mather residential area, they put speed tables in throughout the residential area. What steps or criteria is involved in to get speed tables put into Stone Creek?
Hold on a second. Albert? Is Albert around? Or do you know Cyrus?
Yeah, he's not in the room right now, but you could contact our public works department. There's a process to put, for placing speed pumps. And I will make sure that somebody from our public works department is contacted.
Okay, sir, thank you very much.
Can we get your information, though? Can?
I, I have it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to acknowledge that the city clerk's office received three public comments via email. One is from Donald Childs. Second is from Matt Cummings. And the third is from Larry Ladd. And public comment is available, the emailed public comment is available on our city's website. A copy has also been placed in the back of the room for anybody to review. I'm now going to take public comment via Zoom. The first public comment via Zoom has an email of Sharma. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute you and allow you to speak.
Does anybody want to remind her to unmute? Because we can't hear her.
Sharma, are you there? And can you unmute yourself?
It's not me. I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll go to the next person. Anil, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Mayor and city council, I'd like to speak regarding the Mills Center, but I'll reserve my comments until that agenda items comes to the table.
Thank you, Anil.
The next speaker is Sharon. Sharon, you'll have three minutes. And I've just unmuted you.
Hi, thank you for unmuting me. I don't know if this is the appropriate venue to ask. I was curious whether there will be any kind of statistics available from the fireworks issue with having the $1,000 fine put on people, how many actually were fined for that, whether there was, you know, how that was handled. I know in my area, it was horrendous for probably a week and a half. So I, I'm hoping that there will be some follow-up on some of that and perhaps some of those statistics as to how, whether they, you feel like there was any kind of impact from just having the fine made and whether people were actually fined.
So just so you know, oh, sorry. So just so you know, I had another couple of those emails from, from citizens. I said we're going to get in touch with our fire department. And it's probably not going to be next meeting, but maybe the meeting after, we're going to have them come do a report and see how it actually performed and how it worked in the city.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be.
Go ahead. Hold on. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be prepared to provide some high level information based on the data that I have received from our police department, code enforcement, and fire district.
Yeah, so.
Tonight, this evening, later.
You want to actually do this meeting?
This evening, later.
Okay. So we'll have meeting information for you by the end of this meeting or in this meeting.
No, I think it'll be, it'll be in the city manager's report.
The city manager's report. Yes, yes, council member. That's when I plan to present it.
Will that be available online also, when you get the update from the fire department and the police department? Will all that information be available online?
Yes, we can make that available as well. But I would, if you bear with us for a few minutes, I will have that report for you orally in a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
That's, Mayor, that's all the public comment that we have via Zoom that has been submitted via email and that is in the room for general public comment.
Excellent. Let's go ahead and go to council reports. And I'm going to start off with Siri. Let's go ahead and start with you.
Well, it was a wonderful July. I'm going to say, you know, I had a wonderful birthday and wonderful fireworks. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and, who is it? Who put up the fireworks?
Cordova Community Council.
Yes, the community, yeah, the community council that put up the fireworks and the parade. It was my first time going in the parade and it was wonderful to see the number of people turning out to see both the fireworks and the parade. You know, get on your vaccination, people. It'd be nice to see more people out and about. We had, I attended the Cordova Community Pool opening. And now everybody, because of the heat, there's so many people out there that can go out now and use the pool. Let's see, what else did I do? Well, I did miss the 18th birthday celebrations of the city of Rancho Cordova. And those of you who did can give an update there. I'm sure it was a blast as well. From another perspective, I was a panelist for a Future Generation Leadership Forum where I talked about my career path and how I took the path both in my professional career and my civic engagement and how I got to where I am today. So that was pretty good. I got to listen to other folks on their career journeys. People from the city staff attended as well and shared their career path. So it was pretty good for kids to learn and see what that is about. I know it was pretty fast and pretty short. I know we have a long meeting. So that's all from me.
Thank you, Siri. David Sander, go ahead.
I will also attempt to be brief, although there's quite a bit. I attended a and participated in a fireworks discussion that was hosted by the California Cities Organization, formerly known as the League of California Cities, now rebranded to Cal Cities. So just remember that, Cal Cities, Cal Cities. But the discussion was very interesting. It had fire marshals, police, council members from all over the state engaged in a best practices discussion about how to best control illegal fireworks. And to a person, every jurisdiction on that call had year-round fireworks issues, similar to what we have. So this is not at all unusual. The state fire marshal actually appeared in the call and made some really interesting comments. One, most of these fireworks come from China. And there has been a new level of importation of fireworks from China in the past five to six years. That's probably what's driving cheaper availability of fireworks, not just here in California, but frankly nationwide, that a new channel. that a new channel basically has been opened up. And interestingly, I would have never guessed this, he tied it to gang activity, as if some organized criminal gangs are profiting by distributing these fireworks sort of under the radar of any local jurisdiction. So I was completely unaware of that. Other people on the call who've been involved with statewide task force and fireworks sort of verified that. So it's a very interesting sort of twist on perhaps what we thought was happening. The good news is, the ordinance that we just put in appears to be in line with the best practices of what all those other jurisdictions in California were pursuing. So this idea that we can find a host or the owner of a property for activity that happens on that property that gets us past the state regulations that limit us to a misdemeanor that a police officer has to personally witness and verify is a huge improvement. Because now we can rely on other evidence. It can be a, a citation that we process within the city as opposed to having to rely on a court process. So we've done the right thing. But the question is, how, still remains, how effective will that be overall? Because the problem is, is enormous. Let's see, I attended a bunch of National League of Cities meetings last week. I'm on the board and the executive committee of that organization. The first big group of meetings were regarding transportation and infrastructure and federal dollars that may be coming available to us. I'm working on a letter-writing campaign that's getting support from, as Chair of the Transportation Effort for the National League of Cities, that's getting support from all over the country. You may have seen something from Secog or from League of California Cities asking you to sign on to that effort. The deadline's actually today. You can still do it, colleagues, if you want to sign on to the letter. There is a lot of hope for the bipartisan transportation bill. There are a lot of questions about the subsequent one that would be larger and not really infrastructure, well, not transportation-infrastructure focused, but sort of a broader definition of, of infrastructure focused. There was a very special session at the National League of Cities on Main Streets and what it looks like with regard to retail in this age of Amazon. Great report comments on sort of the decimation of traditional Main Street and the loss of local retail, the loss of local stores, and the efficiency gains that Amazon has been able to create for people have basically eliminated entire classes of retail that used to exist. And that's left an awful lot of commercial and retail space vacant, underutilized, and perhaps unprofitable for other use nationwide. So obviously, that discussion focuses a lot on us. Reuse was the major suggested outcome. You know, how can you reuse old commercial spaces? So if we're talking about Folsom Boulevard as an old commercial corridor, it's the work that we did with Secog last year and the year before. It's also, you know, reflected in this report from the National League of Cities. So it's very, very interesting that this problem is not just unique. And along those same lines, I attended the First Tier Suburbs section, and we had a great discussion on sort of the breadth of challenges that face older suburban areas, like the older part of Rancho Cordova. That whole group of changes there, economic, aging infrastructure, the challenges around schools in those environments, the challenges of having older apartments that are difficult to remodel, all of those, that sort of ball of wax challenges is what is discussed at First Tier Suburbs. So I'm a past Chair of that organization. We continue to have very, very productive meetings. Regional SAN, there's a theme running through here that I didn't intend, but Regional SAN met last week. We have a change in our investment policy. We're actually pulling out of Sacramento County's investment pool that will allow us to invest in securities that are equally as safe, but slightly higher, higher yielding. For example, the LEAF Fund that the State of Rancho Cordova commonly invests in would be available to us now, wouldn't be before. The great thing about that from Regional SAN's perspective is the profits they find, the interest they find off those investments, they make available for local economic development grants. And the focus of that organization is leaning towards, again, old commercial corridors like our Folsom Boulevard. So all too often, development on these old corridors is knocked down by infrastructure fees like those that come from Regional SAN and the sewer district. This would help eliminate some of those sewer charges. So that would be a very good step if we could get it, get it completed at Regional SAN. That's something I'm working on. I was also at the pool opening, which is great. After, it's been a decade, a decade to get that situation turned around. The city put in millions of dollars. The new pool opened. We're, we're very happy, was so happy that day to see, to see people there, to see the swim team is back. I think they hosted an event almost immediately, the Cordova Cordet Synchronized Swim Team. So that is a great facility to have back online for our youth and our kids and our seniors and our families. Really happy to, to have been there. We've had a series of track meets in Rancho Cordova. And as you guys know, I missed the first part of the Fourth of July because I was at another one where my son and, and another athlete here from Rancho Cordova attended and actually qualified to go to the Junior Olympics. So we're going to have two kids from Rancho Cordova going to the Junior Olympics in Florida in a couple of weeks. So that's, that's exciting for us to have that level of success. Rancho Cordova Track Club is doing a great job bringing people out, even from outside of the community in, to try to use our, our facilities because they are that, that exciting. And that's just a huge benefit for our kids, kids who wouldn't have a chance to do this otherwise. And finally, Fourth of July, I was there on the Fourth, missed the Third. I missed the parade because of that track meet, but I was back on the Fourth. And I think that the Community Council did an awesome job in pulling off an event under very challenging circumstances and restrictions from the Health Department. So I just want to commend Shelley Blanchard and Lee Frichette and the entire staff of the Cordova Community Council for just outstanding work in making that event work, which is normally one of our greatest events here in Rancho Cordova, making that event work under such challenging circumstances. It was a huge success. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, David. Go ahead, Linda.
So I have to agree with, with David and with Siri. It was absolutely wonderful to get out and do what felt like a real Fourth of July again. Congratulations to the Community Council and their ability to bring the Budweiser Clydesdales back. They were here about 12 years ago, and everybody remembers. And it was just an absolute treat to see that. Everybody that I know who attended was astounded at the fireworks. It's, you're right, it's too bad that everybody at home felt that they have to equal the Community Council's fireworks display. But David, it sounds kind of like they, somebody at the federal level needs to do an Untouchables equivalent for, for illegal fireworks, the way they did for alcohol back during prohibition. The birthday lunch, Siri, you're absolutely correct. It was a very nice event held across the street where one of our office complexes has established a beautiful outdoor recreation area for all the people that work in those buildings. And I know city staff appreciated the opportunity to just kind of wear shorts and celebrate the city's 18th birthday. I did speak to our kids who come to City Hall, for summer at City Hall. The classes ranged from the eighth grade to seniors in high school. There were about 24 of them, and we talked about the history of Rancho Cordova. Laughco met, but there were no events or no agenda items that concerned Rancho Cordova. We did a tour at one of our local businesses, Tri Tool, which in case you have not noticed it, as you drive up and down Sunrise, it's a very lovely brick building that was built originally for the IRS. But the calm, quiet exterior that you see on the outside has no relativity to the quiet, creative, engaging things that go on in the interior and the equipment that is sent around the world from right here in Rancho Cordova. Our local ULI organization sponsored a seminar, a Zoom seminar, for, to talk about, as David was talking about, reuse of old properties. And their example this time was a shopping center in Plano, Texas, that started off to be your major classic mall with the mall part in the middle, four retail anchors, three of whom had closed. And, and curiously, the, the amount of acreage that they had to deal with was exactly nine acres, which is so relative to our civic center size. It wasn't very large, but it was an opportunity for them to do an awful lot with those nine acres. Yes, it was absolutely wonderful to see the community pool open. And I noticed that somebody on Nextdoor Facebook was not aware that, of the fact that the community pool was open. You should go and check it out. It was a front-page article in The Grapevine, for those of us who did get The Grapevine. And then finally, part of the, part of the heading of reopening the world after having been sheltered for so long. A wonderful Rancho Cordova participant, resident, former firefighter, Mike Spice, passed away last year at this time. And they were finally able to go over to the Keokor Cemetery and do a perfectly beautiful ceremony with so many people from the Fire Department, from, you know, but past and present, fire trucks, local people who had known him. They lived on Zinfandel for years and years and years. And it was really a very heartwarming event, and his family truly appreciated it. And, and tomorrow, under that same category, they're going to rededicate Station 61. It's what they call a line-of-duty dedication for another Rancho Cordova firefighter, a gentleman named Bob Warner, who passed away in 2008. Bob, again, was one of our wonderful, original members of the Rancho Cordova Fire Department. He and Mike were two of the, what were four drivers of our Mills One fire truck. And we now, because of bad knees, are really down to only one person who can drive the fire truck, which now is in the custody of the City of Rancho Cordova, and, and led the parade this year again. Another way in which we all felt like there was a little normalcy in the world. So that's from my report, Garrett. Thank you.
Linda, can I, can I just ask? They're going to rename the fire station after Bob Warner?
They sure are.
Okay. I saw a press release, and it was a name that I didn't recognize. That must have been a...
Yep. No, tomorrow morning, tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. Bob, people may remember, Bob and his family lived really right across the street practically from the Fire Department. And, and they could always tell what the weather was by which way the, the flag at the Fire Department was blowing.
He was one of our founders who worked, worked on incorporation. Great community volunteer, awesome guy, died way too young.
Wonderful gentleman. Part of, part of the Fire Department's honor... And ceremonies.
This is Station 61 on Folsom Boulevard, that's what we're talking about?
61, right.
Nice.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to correct something I said. I said the pools were closed 10 years. That's not accurate. The diving pool was closed almost 10 years ago, nine years ago. The main pool was only closed six years ago. So we've had, there's been a six-year gap, nine year for diving, not 10 overall.
All right.
Donald, Station 61, the initial little chunk of the building, on the east side of the building that has, where you walk in and it's got a little office right there, that was the founding office of the Mills Fire Department in 1920 or 1922, which is the oldest fire department in the, in the county.
Wow.
Very good.
That's our heritage here.
Very cool.
All right. Thank you, Linda. Donald?
Uh, yeah, I'll be a little bit repetitive, but I'll go as fast as I can. Yeah, I attended the parade and the fireworks show that night. And then, like a lot of my neighbors, I watched from a distance at home the neighborhood fireworks show that was going on throughout the county. And even got on my balcony and could see quite a ways from the second story. Yeah, I, I'm really interested to see how that, how our new ordinance fared. I know I've gotten some preliminary reports, but the, you know, fines were issued, just like for the City of Sacramento and a lot of other folks. So that is good to hear. Linda and I were the ones who were able to attend the birthday celebration, which was really the, the first all-hand staff meeting since the pandemic, which was really exciting, to at least staff were able to get together and see each other. Some, some literally haven't seen each other for 18 months. And, you know, because maybe they're at Neighborhood Services or they've been remotely from home this entire time, if their job would allow. And so I was able to, and I will share another thing is, the Children's Museum, which I'm a board member of, started a summer camp that my six-year-old got to attend. And I actually picked him up from the Children's Museum, walked into City Hall thinking that that's where the birthday bash was, the birthday party was, and then realized that nobody was at City Hall because they had all gone over to the party. So it was great to see folks again and be able to thank them for their hard work and dedication throughout this last, you know, 15, 18 months of hell for many of us. Yeah, that was really great. Elk Grove Unified started last week. So students that I believe are in track B, C, and D at Sunrise and Garvey, started back last Thursday. So we do have students back at full-time, five days a week, in-person classroom teaching in Rancho Cordova. Elk Grove, I believe, has nine elementary schools that are on year-round. Both of, both of the ones in, in the south area are, are back. Attendance looks to be, looks up. With the most recent update to the CDC guidelines, it sounds like they were, they were actually in the process of having to possibly offload students because they couldn't have enough students, they couldn't fit enough students into the classrooms to accommodate all of the students. And so I guess, come near the last minute, the rules changed as far as the social distancing requirements for in-classroom. So they have to wear a mask if they don't have to be socially distanced anymore in the lower grades. So that's really great news. And then, yeah, the last thing I would just use some of my time for is, for any of you that have been on the fence about vaccination, I'll just share, and David, if you want to disagree with me, go ahead. But I think the last I heard was 99.9% of people that are ending up in hospitals and in the ICU are unvaccinated. If that's not clear evidence that people that get vaccinated don't get sick and don't spread this disease, because right now, I believe, in our county, we're right around 50% vaccinated, that is just begging for a problem. And if you want schools to stay open and you want your businesses to stay open and you don't want to get sick, please get vaccinated.
All right, thank you, Donald. All right, Mayor report. So Amibera came out. He looked at the road off of White Rock over the new development. He is now working on getting more money for our community to help out to continue the road all the way to Grantline, hopefully fixing up that and turning that into a major thoroughfare for our city. So it was great to see him and great to see him actually. So I went to his conference. It was great to have him in our city, talking about everything. So you got to hear from a doctor, politician that actually told you about COVID. And then he actually said about how he's trying to bring revenues back to the, his county and actually the city of Rancho. Congratulations to Rance, Rance Sports. They just opened in our city. If you don't know what they do, they're biking, swimming, and they're going to be the way that we bring Ironman to Rancho Cordova. So because of how bad the water and stuff has actually gotten in Sacramento, Rancho Cordova is very attractive because of natomas and our, and our parks and our runways, that this is going to be the new stop. So don't be surprised if one of the Ironmen or half-Ironmen has eventually ran out of the city of Rancho Cordova. We had our first arts, an art, a place that you can go to watch plays is actually opened up in the city of Rancho Cordova. I know that individual's here today, and he's going to say a little bit about it. But it's amazing to actually have this, to go from a city that didn't have this except for at our high schools. Now we have professional thespians actually coming to our city to do plays and act. I met with the Library Commission, and we're losing our head, which is actually hurtful because she's been with us, Rifka, forever. But she's actually moving on. And so we're trying to find a new person to sit on the head of the Library Commission. But the good news is, is that they're, the federal government has put aside money now to build a library. So if a city is willing to match the funds, they'll come alongside to actually build. So this may be the, the lighting of fire that we've always wanted, to have a Rancho Cordova library in our actual city. So I'll be working on that, seeing that I'm the vice chair on the Library. So I'll be working on that, seeing that I'm the vice chair on the Library Commission. In case you guys wondered, Michael Harris, I don't know if you're here, but we had been in discussion about the William Alexander Lesdorff Memorial Sign. Cyrus, can you tell them when that's actually getting put back on real quick, back up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The sign was taken down by Caltrans for construction activities. And they put it back for the weekend of Memorial Day at the request of some of the constituents, but they took it down again. And they plan and intend to reinstall it after the construction is complete, which is anticipated by the end of this year, early 2022.
Also, I met with the Golden State Water District. So the good news is, is we aren't officially in the major drought stages. But if we don't get water by October, November, right now, they're going to do what they're asking us for as a city, because we did really good about this. Is they're asking us to cut back on water. What they're really asking for is, instead of five days a week of watering, they're asking for three days a week and water your trees, because that helps out with cooling of your entire housing, but they would like that. And it's only an ask. They know that if you can't do that. But they say if by October we're not seeing water, the water tables will be in a way, they'll probably put out a mandatory of ask for us if we go into that type of drought. You probably already saw that, you know, Folsom is basically, you can't even launch a boat, and some of our biggest water areas are basically down in the dumps. Had an amazing trip on the Fourth of July, got to go the Fourth and the Third of July, got to announce the people, the band. It's weird trying to be a hype man. I'm not used to it. I threw out my voice on the Third, and then had to bring it back on the Fourth. And then it was great seeing everyone at the parade. It's great as we slowly start to open back up, as the, you know, the state starts to open back up. And actually, now it's starting to close back down. But at this point, I'm going to go ahead and ask for our city's manager's report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the interest of time, I will limit my comments to two topics. One, there was a request about the fireworks, the illegal fireworks. So I'll give you a very high-level report, and then we will put a more detailed information on the city's website for those who are interested. And since we also had two public comments related to the public information requests and how they're processed, I will be asking the city attorney and city clerk to respond to that issue. So first of all, related to the illegal fireworks, the city did adopt an urgency ordinance, basically making the host responsible for any illegal fireworks. It is a big problem, not only for the city, but also for the entire region and the entire state. And as Councilmember Sander mentioned, much of the illegal fireworks come from overseas. People find a way to get hold of them. But we adopted the ordinance with the hope that we would use it as a deterrent and also be able to have a way to follow up with the residents and the complaints we get. And also give us the tools and the ability to confiscate any illegal fireworks that our department, our police department comes across. So with that, we enacted a special team that worked until 3:00 a.m., both on July 3rd and July 4th. We had, and during those two days, we had 130 calls for service, and which our team members were able to respond to. The team members included our police department, our code enforcement, and SAC Metro Fire. So they were able to respond to these calls, and they were able to confiscate a good amount of illegal fireworks. But there are also some hurdles, as you can imagine. Many of the calls that the team received indicated in the area of. And that is not specific enough for our code enforcement or police department to take specific action on those complaints. We also, or the team also encountered a fair amount of illegal fireworks, either in parking lots or public streets. So there was really no way of tracking who set them off or who they were connected to. So those are some of the issues that they face. So we, the team stays in place, of course, we're not activating them until 3:00 a.m., but it is an issue that's almost year-round. It's almost ongoing. And the team will stay in place and will continue and track the work they can do and find a way to deal with those. We're also in communication with other agencies and other jurisdictions to find ways to learn about their best practices and find a way to respond to the complaints more effectively. So more to come on that, but I felt it was important to provide that information to the public and to the audience here in the room. So with that, I'm going to ask city clerk and city attorney to also give a brief update about the public comments we have related to our public information requests.
Thank you, Mr. Harfar. Just briefly to supplement the comments on fireworks. Again, I appreciate the collaboration among PD, Code, and Fire. There was a good team effort. I also would emphasize that some of the challenges that the city manager referred to in implementing this ordinance were ones that we discussed in advance with other partner agencies. We appreciate the collaboration we received in trying to troubleshoot how to fully implement this and get the most that we could out of this approach. We collaborated with both Sacramento and also the city of Folsom. Their officials there appreciated their assistance very much. And I think that there will, as the city manager said, be opportunities to work with those and other agencies to improve this model and approach as we move into the next year as well. I'll pass it over to the city clerk to follow up on the public records act comment.
Hi, Stacy Leitner, city clerk for the city of Rancho Cordova. Thank you very much to FISA and Helen and others who are interested in receiving documents and records from the city. We know that that information is available and important. And we do want to expedite those requests and get them to you as soon as we can. I will share, we are a small team. I'm not using that as an excuse. But I am sharing with you that there has been an uptick of public records requests, and we are working diligently to respond to those requests. FISA, I did look up while I was sitting here in our log, and I can see that the response was responded to. And I do see the response, and I do see the records and the emails that were provided to you. I'm happy to talk to you about that offline, and I have no problem resending that request if, for some reason, it got stuck in your junk mail, or you didn't find it, or see it, or what have you. So I'm sorry if there was a miscommunication, and I would be happy to chat with you offline. For anybody who is interested in receiving records, there are a few ways that you can do that, just so you know. One, you can submit a public records request through the portal that's available on the city's website. That's the best way to do it. That way, it can be in writing. We have your contact information. We know exactly what it is that you are requesting, and we do do our due diligence to respond within the 10 days to let you know if we do have records. Oftentimes, we can extend that to 14 days if it's a multi-record request, or we need to reach out to a number of different departments. But we do try and hit all of those deadlines. We're actually very good about hitting those deadlines. But we do depend upon the different departments to get those records to us so that we can review them, coordinate with the city attorney's office, redact what does need to be redacted, and there are laws and procedures that we do need to follow. We understand that some requests do take additional time, and we appreciate your patience. And we are working as diligently as we can to continue to host these meetings and get our agendas out and a number of other responsibilities in which we have. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my report.
Excellent. All right, we're going to do consent items. Consent calendar items are matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for an individual consideration, all items may be approved in one motion. Are there any council items that the council wishes to pull?
Seeing none, I will move approval of Items 9.1 through 9.8.
Second.
Stacy, can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yes. Consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for an individual, all items may be approved with one motion. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing item. And I'm going to ask if the council wishes to pull any.
Seeing none, move approval.
Aye.
We need to open the public comment period.
Okay. Can I go ahead and open the public comment period at this time? Does anyone wish to say anything?
There are no public comments via Zoom. The clerk's office has not received any for this particular item, 10.1, via email. And I don't have any public speaker cards from the public for this item.
Excellent. Go ahead, close the public hearing. And now I'm going to ask for a motion.
So moved?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
So this public hearing item, we're going to go ahead and announce, and then we're going to go ahead and continue to August 22nd. So I'm going to open it and then continue it, right, Stacy?
That's correct.
Okay. So go ahead and open this public hearing item. And then, do we move it now, or should I ask for public? Adam?
Run 11.1.
Yes, you should ask if there's any members of the public who wish to speak.
Does anyone in the
Adam, I don't think your mic's on.
Does anyone in the council wish to speak before we push this item to August 2nd? Well, we'll have a big discussion about it, but I want plenty of time to talk about 12.2.
You only asking comments from the council, not the public?
No, I'm asking for the public.
No, from everybody. Okay.
So there are no, we have one hand that was just raised by Sharon in Zoom. So I'm going to go ahead for this particular item, 11.1, and allow her to speak. Sharon, can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, thank you. I just did. Thank you. I just wanted to state that I had watched the previous meeting where you guys had discussed the tower. And as a longtime resident of Rancho Cordova, I really liked the idea of the clock tower. I thought that it actually, that the design from the previous one that had the fake ivy on the wall around it, actually was a pretty nice design. And considering even where it was put at, where it was placed behind the grocery outlet, I really thought that it would be in addition to our city. So that's all I just wanted to say, that I did take a look at that, and I thought it looked nice. And as far as, I know there was one suggestion about maybe putting the city seal on there. And quite honestly, I don't think that was necessary, in my opinion, especially since in 10 years, our city seal could look a lot different. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you.
Change the city seal?
Thank you.
We changed the logo, huh?
We can always paint over it in case we didn't use it.
All right, I'm going to close the
Now things just got complicated.
Right. Since we're going to bring this back, we're going to close this and bring this back.
Move to continue.
Move, we can
Continue the act. Yeah.
All right. Roll call.
Linda's motion.
Can you announce the motion in a second again?
We're going to move
Okay.
this to August 2nd?
Perfect.
Do I have a second?
We're going to continue it. Yeah.
All right.
Continue to August 2nd. And the motion was by Budge, second by Terry.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to get into regular calendar items. Let's get everyone set up on our Zoom, what's necessary.
I think they're here.
All right. So we're going to go ahead and go to 12.1. I'm going to ask Stacy if you could read the subject.
The subject is a resolution awarding construction contract number 2021-256 in an amount not to exceed $4,511,000 with Z Squared Construction for the Rancho Cordova Youth Center Project.
All right, Cyrus, can I go ahead and have the staff report?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm thrilled to bring to you this topic, this agenda item today. Having a youth center in the community has been a longstanding goal of the city council and the community. And through the relationship that some of our Police Activities League's officers developed with Center of Praise Ministries and Bishop Pauline Lovelace, we were able to enter into an agreement with the Center of Praise, and they donated the building for that purpose. Just a little bit of history about the conversation, how it happened. We, I was made aware of this in fall of 2019 about the vision and the interest that Bishop Lovelace has had for creating an activity center, a place for the youth. And he and I met over lunch. We broke bread. And I asked him what his vision was, and I understood that he was very much aligned with the vision that the city council and our community has for creating that vibrant center. We, a few months later, we entered into an agreement for donation of the land. And one thing that's noteworthy is that the church had a buyer for the property. They had actually gone into escrow. And once Bishop Lovelace became aware of this, he pulled out, and he graciously offered to donate the land to the city. We went through a process. We involved 15 of our youth organizations and community members to decide what this center can be. And we were able to develop a vision for it that becomes a hub for the youth and a possibility to expand ultimately into youth complex. We engaged the Police Activities League, our PAL team, and also the Boys and Girls Club. We believe that there would be a great operational plan that hasn't been completely finalized yet, but it will be ready for presentation to the city council later this fall. So I'm going to ask Megan Siren, who's been working really hard, and I appreciate her hard work, to present the plan and the project. Bishop Lovelace is in the audience, and I would love for him to come up to the podium and talk a little bit about his vision as well. Maybe we hear the presentation first, so everybody has an understanding of what the project is, and then ask Bishop Lovelace to also present his vision and what his goals have been. So with that, Megan Siren?
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Megan Siren, and I'm the senior management analyst for the city. And tonight, we will, it's not, no. Sorry. We're going to provide a brief update on the youth center project, and we're recommending approval of the construction contract. And we'll talk about a few of the next steps. Cyrus kind of briefly went over some of the history of the youth center, but we did want to provide some content for that. So this did start in the fall of 2019, and it brings us to today, July 2021, where we are recommending city council award a construction contract. This is a diagram of the outside of the youth center as we are proposing in the construction contract. And this is on investment circle, and it'll include both interior and exterior modifications to the building. And our construction timeline is approximately August or September of 2021 through May, June of 2022. This is some outdoor features that we did want to make sure everyone is aware of. We will be including some perimeter will be including some perimeter security fencing, some covered seating, a basketball court outside, a turf multi-sport playing field in the back, and also ADA improvements outside per access. This is the interior of the building. So these are all the rooms and what we will have for the youth to come. So we will have some secure entry that, to make sure that the youths are in a secure place. We'll have a computer lab, reading creative writing room, an arts and music room, a boxing ring and gym, a large recreation and game room, a teen room, a multipurpose room. We will have a catering kitchen, and we'll have a staff break room. These are just some proposed interior perspectives of some of those rooms. So the boxing room, the entry is on the bottom right, the arts room, and a perspective looking into the boxing room from the recreation room. This is also the interior of the main room, so, and then the break room. So exciting. So we are here tonight to recommend that you approve the resolution to authorize the city manager to execute contract number 21, 2021-256 with Z squared construction to construct the Rancho Cordova Youth Center in amount not to exceed $4,511,000. We will be bringing forward a detailed operation plan to be presented in October 2021. And our partners for operation are in the room currently that we are in discussion with, which is the Boys and Girls Club and Rancho Cordova PAL. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And we can have Bishop Lovely.
I'm Garrett.
Yeah, I have some questions too.
Yeah, just a question.
Yeah, do you want to, person loves, or do you want to go with questions?
I think we should, I would recommend, Mr. Mayor, if we hear from Bishop Lovelace at this point about the vision and the goal that he had, before we get into the questions and some of the details.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening to you, Honorable Mayor, and to the city council, and to staff, and to all the constituencies here. I'm so honored to be able to represent and thank you all for your gracious receiving of our gift to our city. It was 32 years ago that the Center of Praise Ministries was planted here in Rancho Cordova. In fact, right there on Investment Circle. And what an honor it was to be housed in that particular facility on Investment Circle for nearly eight years before our relocating to Midtown Sacramento for the occupation of our cathedral there. But we, as was mentioned, it was thought that we would put that property on the market and had a sizable offering that was given for it. And upon further consideration, it was decided that we would want to see that property used for the city of Rancho for our youth. Our young people are our greatest investment. And I think it is providential in this timing, that at a time when there was great challenge and conflict during the protests, and certainly the strain that we were seeing, excuse me, with the police department and so forth, to be able to say that there was something positive happening between the municipalities of our cities and also our police department and the rest of the community, and particularly within the black and brown community, it was very timely. And I want to again let you know, you have our full support. We pray that that property will be serving this community for years. I'm a 16-year resident of Rancho Cordova, so my children will be raised here. I've got a grandbaby now that's four months old. She'll probably grow up here, and I would love to see us be able to see this youth center here for generations to come. So again, thank you for your partnership, and you're joining us in the vision.
Thank you. Before we get into public comment, just note, Pastor, you're an amazing individual. Thank you so much for donating this to our city. Hopefully, we can do you proud. All right, let's start with question, let's start with public comment.
Okay.
The city clerk's office.
Can we have questions first, and then we could have, and then we could have public comment, and then maybe take, talk about positions or voting? Because I had some clarifying questions that maybe will help some of the public too.
Do we have any public comments?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for this item via email, Zoom, or by the public in the room.
All right. Go ahead, Donald. What questions do we have?
Could the staff give an overview of the other land acquisitions that we've had in the area? Obviously, we haven't planned that because it's been recent, but I don't know if there's an ability to show an arrow map of where else we bought near there?
Yes, Councilmember Terry, I don't have access to the map, so, but I can point out that the city has acquired two smaller parcels right across the street from this location on Investment Circle that we envision as a potential future expansion of the youth center. And we hopefully, you know, the vision, and as I have discussed it with the council, and as we've talked about this, is to ultimately have a youth complex, and that would be the long-term vision of the city. But this is a great starting point, and this is the, the seed for that vision.
And for those of you who know where this site is, if you're driving over there, across the street to the north, those two vacant lots are now owned by the city as well, with plans for whatever is going to be for youth services.
Excellent. All right. Linda, you have some questions?
I, I just have one short question. Remind us what the square footage of this building is?
It's approximately 9,800 square feet.
Okay. And, and it sits on three acres, maybe?
Just less than two acres, actually.
That's all.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would just add a little context.
Go ahead, Dan.
And that is, you know, after we got enough signatures to get on the ballot in 2002, at a big community meeting, or we invited, I don't know, hundreds of people who came, and everyone ranked, what did they want? What did they want this new city to accomplish? And there was a lot of things in there about reinventing old Rancho Cordova, and reinvesting in things, and fixing things. But number one on that list was youth activities. And it has taken until this point to have the resources, the facility in the right spot, the land available, and probably most importantly, this enormous donation from the bishop and his congregation to make this possible for us. So we've done other things, you know, we fixed the pool that we talked about earlier. We've done girls softball as best softball facility in Northern California. Little League's on its way. This facility's happening. Lots of partnerships with schools, but this is a big one, and I just don't want, don't want it to be missed. This has been a long-term goal of ours, and if it wasn't for the bishop and his action and the interaction with our youth officers, we probably wouldn't have this opportunity in front of us right now. So it's, it's an awesome moment. So happy about this.
I agree with you, David. It's well worth remarking that there were probably 40 different ideas that people wanted for the city, and the top five, all concerned are children.
Right.
Siri, do you have any comments?
Well, I love that. Children on the top of everybody's mind because they are our future. My question was actually a follow-up to this. You know, there were a lot of questions that came in through, you know, about runaway youth, and a place that we can, you know, house homeless kids who are running away, not homeless kids, the kids who are running away. Would that be a place for the youth complex that you mentioned, Cyrus? Or will you have any plans for that?
I think it's, it's probably a bit premature to say, Councilmember Pulipati. I, I think the, we have been focusing on this building and the operational plans for this building, but the future expansion and the future complex is something that we haven't really have been able to have a conversation. I do anticipate that it will take some level of community visioning, some discussions with the city council and the community to, to craft a vision for that, but that's probably for a future conversation.
Okay. Thank you.
Here, I, I would just point out that as far as I know, the only facility like that in this region is Wind Youth Services, which just opened, had a major expansion three years ago, two, 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 three years ago. Siding and building a facility like that is very unique and challenging, and there, there's very few funding sources for it, for like ongoing maintenance. But it's, I know, I, I and some of the staff followed up with that, the person who, the student who asked about that subject. And I think their request was more in general that we should be considering services or how to connect youth with services like that. But it, the, the one place that is actually downtown Sacramento, I think serves like five counties. So the demand and the youth of that facility's a little tough. I, I would just say, I'm happy to make a motion on this, but I would also just echo and thank the bishop and everybody else and all of the staff. I would also say that, you know, David and some other folks have shared with me that right after we became a city, we approached the Boys and Girls Club and tried to start this conversation. And it's really interesting that with the onset of Measure H funds coming in, we've been able to build a relationship with the Boys and Girls Club. They brought us to this point where, like, all the stars aligned. Like, they were serving a couple of schools in the city, but if they had their own space, they could have expanded. They've already established our Boys and Girls Club of Rancho Cordova charter. So we actually have a club. We just don't have a club to put them in, right? And we finally are at the point where we have a space for them. It, it's interesting, because I know the next, the next item we're going to be talking about is the civic center. When we started this conversation about the civic center, we didn't have this place. We didn't have this land. We didn't have this site. And so even as we started, you know, the community engagement and the visioning of the civic center, it was going to include a bunch of these services that then were offset because we were gifted this land and this building. And so it's a really exciting opportunity to have, again, another site like this on, you know, near mass transit, near the high school, that can serve all of these, these great, great, and, and address a lot of these needs that we have. So I'm really thrilled, and I'm, I'll move it.
Really quick, before, before you move that item, I know the Boys and Girls Club are here. Come on up. Tell us what.
Kim there?
Yeah.
Yeah, Kim Malik, he is here from Boys and Girls Club.
Great.
So tell us all the amazing stuff you're going to do with this youth center.
Oh, my goodness. We're just so excited and grateful for the opportunity. And it's, it's quite a big vision. We're excited to work very close with PAL. You know, it's when we went to our first meeting and saw some of the drawings and saw the boxing ring. I was talking to some of my colleagues with Boys and Girls Clubs of America, and when they started the boys' club, boxing was the thing. That's what, what clubs had. And so they were very excited about that. But our partners throughout the city are just excited about us having a place where we can serve more kids and engage the community, engage our corporate partners. There's just going to be a tremendous amount of opportunity ahead of us, and we're just excited to be at the table with all of you.
That's great. Is, is PAL here? I see, thought I saw him come and leave.
Jose, Jose Dela Cruz is here too.
Yes.
Oh, did you just pop up? I didn't, come here. Come on up. That's all right. The man, the legend.
That's right.
Was he in the hallway or something?
Yeah, he, he was underneath somebody with no chair. That's all right. We've packed in here. So for both of you, we're really excited about this partnership. We're excited that you're, you're going to come alongside us and be able to usher in the first youth center of Rancho Cordova. And so the fact that you guys already put in the time before we had this, we just want to say thank you, and that we're excited about you coming alongside. And I know this is going to mean an amazing basketball program for our city.
You got it.
You know what I'm saying? All right. Well, thank you so much, you two.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right. Now, Donald.
Our second motion.
Excellent. Can I have a roll call?
Mayor Gatewood, we do have a hand raised. Do you want to go back to public comment?
Sure.
So Sharon, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. You'll have three minutes.
I, I just had a quick question. I couldn't, I didn't notice it on the, the schematic when you showed the building. Will there be a working kitchen? Because children are always hungry. You laugh, but that's how they, you know, if they're hungry, they're not thinking about learning. So.
Oh, yeah.
The answer is yes.
Boys are always hungry.
The answer is yes. It came with remarkable kitchen facilities. I have.
Oh, terrific. That's great. Okay, that's all I had to ask. I didn't remember seeing it.
All right. Did you want to, ma'am, did you want to come up and talk? All right, come on.
I'm sorry if I'm taking too long.
Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it.
Hello, my name is Lupita Vizortmanes. I've been a resident of Rancho Cordova for 45 years. And I want to echo what we've been planning, and I, and I'm sure you all know, from the history, from the 90s, the early 90s, we had actually envisioned with Fred Tykert and the Boys and Girls Club to work on a youth club here in Rancho Cordova when we started the Cordova Children's Council, with a lot of folks that, that have either died, moved away. The children have grown up and become parents, and the children are now our grandchildren. We've been waiting for this a long time, and I'm elated to hear that the Boys and, Boys and Girls Club are coming back into the mix, because that's who we had envisioned in being a partner with us, back when we were working together with the, when we created the Folsom Cordova Community Partnership. And we had a roundtable of all, all of these discussions. The building that we had chosen to help ignite this is the Cordova, is the neighborhood center that's over McGregor and Coloma. And so we really wanted to have a youth center there, but the money was tight. We only had $1.5 million or whatever that we were able to finagle out of the Sacramento County. And we were able to do that and create that hub that still exists. But specifically for the youth, this, this is a major milestone for Rancho Cordova. If nobody else understands or appreciates that, I think old timers, young timers, all of the folks that have been waiting patiently for decades, not since 2002, we have been waiting this, and I applaud you for moving forward and having the vision, the partnership, and especially with the bishop, the gentleman that, and, and the praise church that has donated this parcel. Because you don't get a free lunch, but we're getting something much more grander than that. I appreciate everything that you're doing for the children, for the youth. Be visionary, continue to be visionary, include that the things that we want, but don't forget those of us that have moved on from being parents to grandchildren, because we still have the need to attend these functions. So lounges for parents and grandparents and guardians would be much, much appreciated. But overall, I'm elated and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lupita.
All right. So we got a sec, a first and a second. I'm going to go ahead and, at this point, I'm going to go ask, ask for a call.
Councilmember Sander.
Hi.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Before we get into 12.2, I'm going to do a quick five-minute bathroom break. So if anyone needs to use the bathroom, has been waiting this whole time, I appreciate you. you waiting. Take five minutes. Everyone run to the bathroom real quick, and then we can get into it as a community. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and get started, let me make sure all my council members are online.
Pre-conveoting at 7:21.
Excellent. Alright, so let's go ahead, Stacy, would you go ahead and announce the subject?
The subject for item 12.2 is Mills Crossing Civic Center Design Principles Discussion.
Alright, can I ask Mica and Stefan for a staff report?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, I'm going to start a bit of a, a high-level introduction before I turn it over to, to our staff team.
Go ahead.
Good evening, council members of the public. I think before we, we have a PowerPoint presentation tonight that we, our project team will present to you. But before we do that, I think there is, there are some historical context and background that I think are important for us to revisit and review before, before we get into the actual presentation of the project itself and what it's supposed to do. A longstanding goal for the city has been the revitalization of Folsom Boulevard. And you, we just, just a few minutes ago, you heard about the youth center, and the Civic Center follows the same line of thought in bringing activities along Folsom Boulevard to, to help revitalize and activate our, our corridor. So to that end, shortly after the city's incorporation, we initiated a community visioning exercise and embarked on preparing a planning document and developing a set of tools to guide future development and redevelopment along Folsom Boulevard. The city engaged some of the best and most qualified urban planning experts to help with that process, and the effort ultimately culminated in what we call the Folsom Boulevard specific plan. In essence, the plan seeks to increase the density of both housing and commercial activity, increasing pedestrian, bicycle, and transit trips to and from throughout the area, increase the visibility of the corridor as a destination, and change the dynamic and image to that of a high-demand, thriving urban area. I read that section from the specific, specific plan itself, those were some of the, some of the high-level goals and objectives that we had, the city council had established and had approved for, for the, for Folsom Boulevard. And most recently, the city also participated in the civic lab that was initiated by SACOC, as mentioned by Councilmember Sander. This effort was focused on commercial corridor revitalization, and that process also validated many of the concepts, principles, and strategies identifying the specific plan to revitalize the Boulevard. Bringing the vision to reality has been also a major focus of the city's, city council, and, and to that end, we've also completed a series of programs and projects to achieve, to achieve that goal. And I just wanna highlight some of the, some of these efforts are investing over $50 million in public infrastructure improvements to date, and that work continues. We still have additional work to do and additional vision to, that we would like to implement. We've also have been working with property owners along the, along the Boulevard through our community engagement and code enforcement programs, and not only to inform and educate, but also to encourage these property owners to invest and update some of the old and dilapidated apartment complexes and some of the commercial buildings on the Boulevard. We've also removed some of, some of the old and blighted buildings on Folsom Boulevard. Some of you may recall Stagger Inn or First Value Inn, Cordova Lodge, on and on, the list, the list continues. So some of the most blighted areas have been cleaned up, but once again, the work continues. We also partnered with Los Rios College to, the college district, to bring the campus to Folsom Boulevard, and the location at Mather and Folsom Boulevard was achieved through the city's participation and through the city's efforts to do that. The city also invested in partnership with Regional Transit on, with the Mills Station Arts and Culture Center, referred to as MAC, and that has been also a multi-million dollar investment that the city has put into another vision of upgrading and upbringing, updating Folsom Boulevard. We also worked with a housing builder, housing developer, to bring the New Horizon Housing Project, and the first phase has been constructed and the second phase, it's in the, is in progress, and we anticipate that that work will be completed in the year, in the next year or two. We just heard about the youth center, that's another project that the city has invested on, and we also have made investments on properties at strategic locations with the vision, the idea of boosting development and, and being, and creating some, some catalysts for future and further development. And these efforts, you know, what, what we're trying to address, the problem that we're trying to address, is really attracting new investments. We, we recognize, we well recognize that public investment alone is not sufficient, it will never do the job, and we have to be able to attract new investment, private investments into the update and upgrade of our aging and underperforming commercial and housing And despite all of the efforts that the city has made, our success with attracting new business has been somewhat limited. We have not been able to do as much as we had hoped and as much, as much as we want to, to bring into way of new investment. So, with, to assist and facilitate that discussion and, and help with that, we came across this property that we're discussing tonight, the, the Mills Station site, in 2018. We, the city purchased it in 2018, and the city council directed staff to explore, create, create a series of visioning sessions and explore public and private partnerships and develop a project concept that is consistent with the vision of the Folsom Boulevard specific plan, and project that could activate the, the vision of, of the plan and be a catalyst to encourage new investment in the community. And our goal was to create something that is truly unique, a thriving urban hub for visual and performing arts, health and wellness, as well as community meeting space, residential housing, and retail. And these are based on some of the prior discussions and prior visioning conversations that we've had with the city council. So, I would like to acknowledge that most of the concerns we have heard related to the project, as many people have been excited about the concept of a, of a civic center and activating the site, but many of the concerns that we have heard are related to housing. And, and as you will see during our, our presentation on some of our slides, housing at this site has been part of the discussion all along. This is an ideal transit-oriented site for a mixed, please let me allow, let me finish my comments, and you will have your chance. This is an ideal transit-oriented site for a mixed-use development with housing to activate the site for the long-term viability. There's also concern about the acreages of land dedicated to housing and public spaces. Looking at purely acres of land is neither appropriate nor accurate to represent the proposed project. It is probably more appropriate to consider the amount of square footages set aside for the public use and the number of units for the housing. So as you will see once again in the presentation tonight, the proposed projects include 80,000 to 100,000 square feet of public uses, which is substantial. And we have to be extremely cautious and mindful about programming the space and funding the ongoing activities and the operations and maintenance of, of a facility of that, that size. Related to the number of residential units, what is, once again, what you will see in the presentation, you will see a range of 110 to 130 residential units, which is not considered as a dense development, high-density development along, at a, at a, at a, at a commercial, at a transit site. We also have heard residents concerned or complaints about things like a youth center, a veterans hall, movie theater, bowling alley not being in the plan. You just heard about the youth center, we believe and we are confident that there will be other opportunities. In fact, I did, I wanted to point out that this morning, we had a conversation with the county of Sacramento about a potential veterans hall at Mather. That's a conversation that we had earlier today, and we're exploring some options and opportunities for that facility at Mather site. We also have additional facility, additional underused, underperforming retail sites, commercial sites along Folsom Boulevard. We have reached out to many of our private developers in the way of bowling alleys or movie theaters, and so far, we have not been able to draw the attention or traction or, or interest of any of these developers. But those efforts have continued, and we will continue in making sure that tho, those opportunities are created and provided for the community in the future. Cities do not build movie theaters, cities do not build bowling alleys. The best we can do is to find a, an interested party, an interested developer who can enter into partnership with the city. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mica Runner, and we will have a, a slide presentation that we will present to you, and then we will continue with some public comments and, and additional questions and comments from the city council.
Thank you, Cyrus, Mica Runner, Deputy City Manager. Good evening, mayor and council. Wanted to just hit on a couple of points before handing it over to the project team to, to go through the presentation tonight, but just a couple of, of items to add to the background that Mr. City Manager gave. This really is, I think the goal is building a complete project. If we're gonna do something on this site that doesn't make a complete project, only build out half of the site, from our perspective, that would be a risk in, in, in making the catalyst type of project that we'd wanna see to influence the future investment for Folsom Boulevard, whether it's attracting some of the uses that were talked about, whether it's restaurants or those other retail opportunities. The real impact would be creating a, a whole complete project that could really be used as a catalyst for the Boulevard and for future investments along Folsom Boulevard, is really the goal of, of, of some of the why of, of including potentially the private investment of both the residential piece with the public investment of the public facilities, is really trying to create the there there for the project. The only other thing I'll mention is really trying to be placemaking, trying to do a project creates a special place, a unique place, in all of the different efforts that we've seen nationally and, and kind of the right thing to do around design and around transit-oriented development, is to do mixed-use development and really trying to provide a 24/7 type of atmosphere for the community that only can just live at this facility, but also play at this facility, at the different public facilities, get served at the facility from the different services that might be there, but really trying to create a whole project moving forward at this site, understanding that there could be other future projects for the community, as Cyrus mentioned with the youth center and the, and the veteran centers, or other sites that could be opportunities as well in the future. But really trying to create the best investment, the best impact that the community can have, is to do a public-private type project here with both the residential and the community facilities. And 100,000 square feet of community facilities is an ambitious amount of square footage, and we're looking forward to working with our partners to figure out how to fill that space and how to deliver services to the community. And so I think with that, that's just a little bit of the background, and really the discussion tonight is on establishing some of the design principles for the effort and for the facility. Obviously, as this project moves forward, the city council has full control over the future design and all of the different project details of the project, so not, not all decisions tonight as far as urban design or, or direction can't come up later when it comes to actual the specific designs and the architecture of the project, but this is really trying to get the flavor of the design principles and core principles for the project, along with providing a little more context of kind of the amount and size of the spaces and the public spaces that are here in comparison to some, some other places. So with that, I will hand it off to Corin Crawford, who can lead the discussion with the project team, and we'll be here to answer questions at the end. Thank you.
Stacy, if you wouldn't mind also promoting Elizabeth from Rios onto the panelist group.
Is that Elizabeth Wendell?
Yes, please.
Oh, it's good, you're good. Oh, am I, okay, great. Good evening, all, Mayor Gatewood, Vice Mayor Terry, councilmembers, staff, members of the public. It is, again, a real pleasure to be here and to have an opportunity tonight with you to talk about the, the Civic Center project, Mills Crossing, as the functional name is for the project. We wanted to really just dive right in and provide a project update, leveraging off of the April 27th meeting where council selected a preferred development alternative, which is, which is the, the kind of core topic today. The focus of this presentation really is to continue off of that conversation and talk about some of the thinking, the philosophies, the design principles that underpin the, the project design itself. Next slide, please. And so we're really, in the agenda, gonna focus on a couple of areas to that end. So we've got design principles, just core architectural design principles that Rios, our architect and design partner, will talk about. Mills District, so thinking beyond this site itself, and really how this site is kind of at the epicenter of a, a district that, that is forming. And, and, and thinking about design elements of a district in the vein of being a catalyst project, we talk about the elements of the site itself, but then the, the broader context can also be brought to bear. And then we'll have some conversation around similar projects or comparable and precedent projects. And all of those, the, the idea of talking about these things is it really translates to some of the core project elements that you see. There's, you know, the project character, transit-oriented development, a catalyst project, placemaking in open space, a community hub, community facilities and the required parking, and the housing, the role, the amount, the product type. Those are all kind of core principle area, elements of the project, and the three areas that are gonna be the focal point of tonight's presentation will focus on how that, those principles and, and thinking translate to that. Next slide. So really the goal is to provide the update, to discuss how these design, this design thinking and principles translate to the city's goals and, and, and a customized project. And then towards the end, we would just talk about the process. So we are in the middle of an E&amp;A process, exclusive negotiation process, and what we see as a series of next steps moving forward down the road. Next slide. So I am gonna just speak a little bit about some of the kind of vision and high-level thinking along the lines of the design principles, and then I'll turn it over to Rios, who is remote, to go further. And so these are all things that, that you have heard us talk about, and, and Mica and Cyrus and others have, have mentioned, but some of the core salient issues, factors influencing this development have to do with it being one of very few transit-oriented development nodes within the city, and what, what type of design principles and, and the mix of uses really stimulate that type of opportunity. that type of opportunity, and how it will catalyze Folsom Boulevard, what are the ways in which one can catalyze it. We realize Rancho Cordova has really placed its identity of being a young and forward-thinking, an innovative city, an ambitious city. And then, as Micah was talking about, modern placemaking, a community hub, these are all elements that were some of the initial inputs that we realized about the site that drove our thinking. Next slide. And a lot of that is just reflected in the RFP document that the city released in 2019. Some of those just stated again, catalyst, Center for Health and Wellness, Community Health and Wellness for the Arts, and to be citizen-focused, and some of the uses that were highlighted were cultural, recreational, commercial, residential, and community-serving uses. And so with that, I will let Rios take it away.
Thank you, Corinne. I apologize. Just a second.
Sign of the times, indeed.
We've all been there.
Sorry about that. My dog got excited for the project as well. So my name's Elizabeth Wendell, I'm with Rios, and I just want to talk a little bit about some of the design principles that formed the basis of our initial investigations into this. So, you know, we're very curious about the how and the why of what makes great cities and great places, you know, wonderful placemaking. And so, you know, we've been looking at this development through the urban design and planning best practices, but we've also been, you know, we have, we've been looking at things through Jane Jacobs' thesis and through the WELL community standards, which is, you know, the standards that are formed for health and wellness of urban places, as well as current studies from the Urban Land Institute. And with that, if you can jump ahead, Abby. So we, you know, we saw this ULI article circulated, and it was that council member Budge sent around, and it was interesting because it's written by Sean Slater, who we've been working with on this mall redevelopment in San Diego. And he wrote about several of the principles that are guiding their practice and also this project as well. We are partnered with them on that as a design architect, and they're the architect of record. And some of those principles are about revitalizing an urban core by using lots of landscape, focusing on having mixed uses throughout the site. It used to be just a mall, and so therefore, you know, when retail fell through, the fact that it didn't have this vibrant mix of uses left it as, like, very vulnerable to urban decay. And so some of the things that we've been doing to revitalize it are to bring in those mixed uses, to bring in a lot of smaller nodes for people to gather, a lot of wonderful places that are rich with landscape, have a lot of seating, create a lot of community. And we looked at having these landscape transitions at multiple scales to really enrich the whole community around it. And what we're finding is that these are having catalytic consequences. It's helping the areas around it also grow. So people are starting to invest in some of the areas directly adjacent to this development. There's new investment in a theater that's right nearby, there's new investment in, you know, the park area. It's also helped to keep it from being overrun with homeless people, you know, and it's been, it's really helped make it a vibrant center for San Diego. And so we want to talk about how some of these same principles and ideas are informing this site, but also looking at how we've taken a close look at the unique characteristics of this site and brought them into this project. I'm going to turn it over to Nate.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Hi, everybody. Great to be back with council, really an honor to work with the community of Rancho Cordova on this exciting community hub. As Elizabeth described, we start a project by thinking about these fundamental placemaking or city-shaping principles. They're like the good bones that ultimately will lead to great places. And what we're going to do is walk you through this series of seven, and for each one, we'll talk about what's the idea and then how has it influenced the draft plan that has been developed with council. So each of these also, Abby, you can quick through a couple of these, you can understand them as contributing to those project elements that Corinne described. So each principle might relate to one or two or more of those different project elements. Some of them are broadly applicable, and some of them are more targeted and relate to certain aspects of the project. So we'll start with the first one, magnetic attraction. And this happens to be one of Rios' projects here in Los Angeles. It's a portion of Grand Park that is of a similar scale to the open space that we've been describing in the central plaza of Mills Crossing. This is a portion of Grand Park that includes a coffee shop and water feature and a plaza and shade trees, similar elements that we might consider composing in the attractive public spaces. But the principle here is, we need this to be a there there for lots of different people of Rancho Cordova. If there isn't something that is a reason for you to go there, if you just need to walk your dog and you go to your local neighborhood park, but if this is meant to be something that really belongs to everybody in Rancho Cordova, is a real community hub or a commons, it's got to have something unique, something that attracts you. And so that means different things to different audiences. We want this to be a place that our seniors want to go to, youth, family, veterans, students, just the kind of place that is really alive with lots of different points of view. And so thinking about, next slide, please, what are all of those activities, what are those experiences that people would want to have there? Both outdoor experiences that range from passive immersion in nature to more active cultural activities and performances, and then indoors, what types of, as we've talked about this strong vision of bringing together arts and culture and wellness, what are those things that will attract residents to really come and bring this place to life? So that's the first principle, was seeing, just at a really high level, there's going to be a lot of different things to do there because we're trying to attract different people to come at different times of day and throughout the week, so it's always animated. And specifically to larger gatherings, we are always testing the capacity of the spaces that we're making to accommodate the types of events that we've been describing, we might be showing in a precedent image. And so the indoor theater, for example, has been discussed as a 300-seat theater with, that would be very adaptable and usable for different things, but about that size. And when you think about the types of festivals, or movie in the park, or outdoor performances, we're trying to make sure we have spaces that can accommodate a wide range of activities. Could be smaller events, an outdoor classroom-type experience, all the way up to 300, 600, 1,000 people who could enjoy a larger activity, and we can put those together, might be a festival with multiple smaller destinations. You can imagine up to a couple thousand people able to enjoy the public commons of Mills Crossing in these spaces. That's our first principle. The second principle, which you've heard a lot about already tonight, is the importance of this flexible mix of uses. It gives a kind of resilience that Elizabeth spoke to in that San Diego example, and it also, it's what brings that vibrancy, that you've got somebody who has a different reason to be there at a different hour of the day. Someone's coming to a clinic for an appointment at one time, the students get out of class at another time, somebody's walking their dog because they live nearby at another hour, and it's really trying to create that morning-to-evening life that makes it always feel safe and welcoming, and that it's the kind of place where you know if you go down there, there's going to be somebody else there, there's going to be some reason for you to enjoy it. That happens to be another Rios project, Road DTLA, that's another image we'll show you later. But so just to get specific to the kind of balance that is a part of this mix, it's about 46% of the site that is dedicated to housing, there'll be lots of questions, I'm sure, about that, and about 54% of the site dedicated to community and civic uses, indoors and outdoors, and a parking structure which supports the ability for the rest of Rancho Cordova to be able to easily come and use all of these civic amenities. The third principle is the diversity of the community itself. So we can talk about diversity of uses, but we also have to think about how we can attract, next slide, please, that wide range of visitors, and how we can tap into the inherent creativity and richness of the history of Rancho Cordova, really understanding its ecological setting, the legacy of innovation and technology in the region, all of the different creative artists and people who want to learn how to make things, all of those things, that ingenuity and entrepreneurship, and really make it an incubator for people to come and learn new skills and bring that out of the community here in Rancho Cordova. Diversity of the community is an important principle we want to build on. The fourth principle is that it's a destination for health, and that can mean individual health, it can mean how are we doing things that bring the community together, so stronger social bonds, and then what's the relationship between the community and the larger region in terms of ecological health? And we'll talk a little bit more about that in the next principle, but really thinking of a wide spectrum of activities, amenities, programs, programming partners, which Corinne can speak to later, that bring health to Rancho Cordova. Next principle is activated edges. This is the engagement between the indoor spaces and the outdoor spaces. How do we make them as transparent as possible? How do we make them as lively as possible so that there's a lot of eyes on the outdoor spaces, and also, from the outdoors, you can understand what's happening indoors? And as much as possible, the programming opportunities can spill from indoors to outdoors. So if you're there for, you go to the clinic for a checkup, you know, you can also go and enjoy a therapeutic garden or sensory garden, or if there's something happening at the adjacent college, maybe the professor can take some students on to experience a class outside, or same with the arts, you know, performances that are happening inside, maybe there's a rehearsal before the show or a special session that allows people who are outside to get a glimpse of what's happening in some of these training and art spaces. And our core principle six is the resilient oasis. How do we make this a place that is a model of sustainability, a place that reflects the values that we've heard over and over, that this place should be really something that raises the bar, gives lots of examples, next slide, of innovation applied towards the issues of our day, so for natural drainage, for stormwater, renewable energy sources, engage with the healthy local food providers, of course, encouraging walking, biking, and transit, and we'll talk a little bit more about connections, and we know it's getting hotter and hotter, and so really making sure the urban forest canopy and commitment to shade and thermal comfort for visitors is built into the fabric of this new community And finally, a connective commons, really, and this is another image of Road DTLA, one of our projects, really making this a place that is easily accessible for all of Rancho Cordova. So really addressing how folks can walk here, bike here, take transit, really making the underlying diagram of the whole project about the public space pulling people from the adjacent transit right into the heart of the project, making sure there's porosity to the adjacent buildings so that the adjacent college, Folsom Lake College, has easy access to the public spaces. Anybody who's arriving by car can also easily move through the adjacent building and out into the public spaces. And so just as much as possible, building into the DNA of the project that it is a place that everybody can easily access, and that's going to contribute to that diversity, it's going to contribute to the vibrance, it's going to contribute to it being a place that is used by the community. So those are our seven principles, that those are like, you know, a strong foundation or the bones that underlie this plan that's been evolving and coming together with all of your input. And I'm going to hand it off to Abby, who's going to talk about how, in addition to the thinking about the principles for the specific site, we're also understanding that this is a site that is intended to catalyze and be a part of a larger ecosystem of spaces in the Mills District. And so what is our thinking about the overall district, and how does that influence the ways that we think about what happens at this, on this project?
Great. Thanks, Nate. Hi, I'm Abby with Rios. And so, as Nate mentioned, an important way that we've been thinking about the project so far, and certainly would want to continue thinking about in the future, is that the Mills Crossing site should not only be interwoven and connected with the surrounding neighborhood, but should also be a real anchor in this growing Mills District. So this is a great opportunity to think about that distinctive placemaking that Micah mentioned at the beginning, imagining this as a hub for all of Rancho Cordova that is distinctive and special, so you could say, "I'll meet you in Mills District," and someone would know what that means, and also help catalyze, as we've discussed, future investment along Folsom Boulevard. So this is a way to look beyond our project boundaries, not just think about these about 10 acres, but also think very much about the college next door, the MAC across the street, transit across the street, and then also other commercial neighbors along Folsom Boulevard, and think about how all together, they could come together to become a Mills District that really centers arts, culture, wellness, and togetherness. So we just wanted to really quickly point out some of the design strategies that could be used to help create the sense of a broader Mills District as a really welcoming and pleasant place to be. So one great way to do that is through signage. So this could be district identity signage that helps announce you are at Mills District, whether that's through a large across-the-street banner or reoccurring light banners that help create the sense of place as you're driving or walking along Folsom, so it's not just one place, but it sort of seaters out broadly into the neighborhood. Other types of great signage are wayfinding signage that helps let you know what amenities are nearby, and then multimedia digital screens can also be a really cool opportunity for showing, as you can see here, public art, but then also things like changing wayfinding signage or letting you know what effects are happening that night at Mills Crossing. Secondly, broadly, streetscape placemaking design strategies. So these are other ways to think about embedding distinctive design into the public realm. So things like enhanced decorative crosswalks that help make, for example, the crossing across Folsom to Transit really noticeable and also really exhibit that art and culture that we've been talking about as central to Mills Crossing. Other types of in-ground wayfinding and patterning can help create a sense of place, and again, really center Rancho Cordova art. Fiber landscaping can help create a really inviting public realm where it's comfortable to walk and bike, and then distinctive lighting also across the street or along the sidewalk to help create the sense, again, that you are in a special place called Mills District. Great. So now we wanted to quickly talk about a few precedents and comparable projects, and so I'll hand it back to Corinne to introduce this section.
Okay, so as we start looking at comparable projects and just other reference points, I really think about these as reference points and not so much guiding the project. This project that we have, that we're conceiving here in collaboration with the city is unique, you know, a mixed-use, transit-oriented development, TOD, community hub. So comparables and precedents are useful, they're helpful reference points, but again, I just really wanted to start off saying that this is a unique project, every city's unique, every community's unique, and the comparable serve as just guides and illustrations. Next slide, please. So, next slide, too. So one thing that we did just want to look at are similar centers in the region and comparing other building facilities. So we look at our project, and we, on the far right there, and we're talking and we're showing that just from core civic community or community facilities, the project plans for 80,000 to 100,000 square feet in the blue, the facilities in the blue, that achieve these number of square footages by having multiple stories, so two, three stories in various cases. And when we compare the amount of facilities in Elk Grove or West SAC and Citrus Heights, you can see that those centers- you can see that those centers provide somewhere in the neighborhood of 20,000 to 30,000 square feet of community facilities, and all of which serve communities as large as 179,000 people or, in the case of West Sacramento, 53,000 and 88,000 in Citrus Heights, compared to a city like Rancho Cordova with a population of about 80,000. And so again, this is where we really, we can see that 80,000 to 100,000 square feet in comparison is an aggressive and ambitious project. It's a doable project, it fits with the type of city Rancho Cordova is, but by no means is it providing any short shrift of community facilities in the type of layout and design that's been provided in what you see in front of you. Next slide. And next slide. And I'll hand it back over to Abby to go through this.
Great. So we just wanted to look quickly at some of the acreages, the square footages that we're currently proposing in the site plan, and show some comparable projects to help everyone think through what a right sizing might be to make sure that these public spaces are the right size for the types of spaces, events, and gatherings that would be ideal for Mills Crossing. So just quickly looking here, this central plaza, if we include these angled sections here, is about one acre of public space, and that's actually a really generous large public plaza. Across the street would be a .4 acre community park, so a much greener park that serves both the nearby residents but is also open to the public. This secondary green, which is a really important button, with Folsom Lake College next door, and then there's the ability to close down the central street for festivals and other types of street gatherings. And then, of course, there's .5 acres of green space just here, but then throughout the site, there would also, of course, be additional green space. So we just wanted to look at a few other comparable projects to help understand what can, for example, .6 acres feel like. I'm going to move quickly through these so that we can get to discussion, but here's Mars in the town Sacramento, so this street, building to building, across the whole block is .6 acres. So you can see that this provides space for a lot of different types of gatherings, whether it's festivals or music or everyday eating. Here is the Music Center Plaza in Los Angeles, so this is a project that RIA designed, redesigned for, and this whole area is 1.3 acres, and just the central plaza, which I'm outlining, is about .8 acres. So I think this image really helps convey what a large space, .8 acres, can be and what large gatherings can be hosted in a space like that. Next, this is the Park at the Pearl District in San Antonio, Texas. So this is a mixed-use district with lots of restaurants, housing, education, and then there's the central green, this area called the park, and then extends north. And I think a useful little note here is .9 acres includes a larger area than you're seeing here, but just this green lawn is about .2 acres. So when you're packing closely, you can get a lot of folks in a two-acre lawn. Then lastly, Third Street Promenade in Santa Monica, so this is another project that RIA has helped to bring some activation projects for. So it varies between 70 and about 80 feet wide, and one block of this area is about one acre. So it, again, gets used for a lot of different types of activations and public gatherings, sometimes closed down for movies, but then also is just a really welcoming, lively public And then next, we wanted to quickly look at a few mixed-use districts to see how those can look and feel and potentially be useful touchpoints. This is the Runway at Playa Vista, which is another project that RIA has worked on, which combines restaurants, a grocery store, public spaces, and then with a good amount of residential above. So I think this project helps to start get at that point of how useful it can be to have housing really close to amenities like restaurants to create the sense of activity throughout the day and throughout the year. We wanted to look one more time at the Pearl District in San Antonio, and here focus on the mixed-use nature of the site, the fact that you have a lot of ground floor, retail and restaurants, and then housing above, which again is a large site, if you can look at this map in the bottom right, you see that there's a lot of different housing opportunities and different housing products around the public spaces that bring it to life. This is Proxy in San Francisco. This is about a two-block project, which was, took a parking lot and temporarily turned it into a public pop-up space for events and community gatherings. And so I think this is also useful to start thinking about what types of different pop-ups could animate Mills Crossing site. And then also, again, this parking lot is about .6 acres, is next to a park next door, just about .9 acres, and then is surrounded by the residential fabric of the Hayes Valley Neighborhood in San Francisco. And then for our last comparables, we just wanted to bring a few photos of what types of housing products or what the design might look like for the urban townhomes. So this is what you would see across the central street, and I think it's a real opportunity for this to feel like an urban walkable corridor. Here are a few different examples of townhomes. And then for the multifamily, here are a few different examples of some somewhat comparable multifamily housing projects, which could, again, contribute to a welcoming public realm, and also they will, the design of these will play an important role in creating the character of the whole site.
Okay, and so, last section before we start some discussion, but, and Abby, if you would, maybe we can just spend about two or three seconds on each slide. I just want to flash some images of, you know, work that we completed to get to this point, starting in 2007, a site plan that's not, that we didn't do, go back one sec, please, Abby, a site plan, the original site plan that we saw for this site, 2006, 2008, that has similar design principles carried through until today. Into 2018, other design studies that were commissioned by the city, also showing community center uses and residential during the RFQ process for, you know, different developer interpretations of the site, a mixed-use TOD site, next slide. Next slide. It went to development alternatives, next slide, that got narrowed down into the preferred plan that was selected by the council a couple months ago in late April, which you see in front of you. And this slide just shows some various uses, which we can speak to in the discussion. And so, and so we'll pause here and really go back to the idea, we've just talked about design principles and Mills Districts and precedents and comparables, and how those influence elements of the project, like its overall kind of urban form and character, the open spaces, the community facilities, and the housing. We have one more section or a couple more slides after this, but I did want to pause here and, you know, see Micah Cyrus, if council wanted to ask questions, how would you like to kind of engage in a discussion?
Garrett, your mic's off.
Thank you, Donald.
You're welcome.
All right. Whoever would like to talk, this is the time to bring up, I want all the sheets in, so I can get, how many do we have?
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, there are a few slides just to go in over the next steps of the process that we could probably cover after the conversation, but what the next steps would be.
Okay.
But we can cover that, just to let you know, there are a few more slides just to go forward, timeline and next steps.
Not a problem.
We have about 20 public speaker cards and seven in Zoom at this time.
If anyone would like, at this point, can you please raise your hand on Zoom, because I'm trying to figure out timing? So if you'd like to talk, this is where you raise your hand, we give the cards in before we put it together.
Garrett, it's always important to give the council an opportunity to ask any clarifying questions or information from presenters.
Okay.
Before you go to public.
Okay, hold on one second. So how many do we get?
So we have about 30 right now.
30 total?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's an hour and a half. That'll take us to 9:30. Okay, so I want to hear from everybody, but I also want time to actually talk about it. So we're going to do clarifying questions. I'm going to shrink it to two minutes so that we can actually get it in. Hopefully you'll be able to make your point by then, so we can be here for an hour as a group and then get the people. We're going to start with the people in here who were nice enough to show up. And so let's go ahead, and my council members, do you guys have any questions for the presenters at this time before we let our constituents talk?
Excuse me, I'd like to clarify, is that allowed?
I do have one.
Yes. Yes, it's, yes, it is allowed.
It's specifically allowed under the Brown Act. I'll be happy to give you a citation if you'd like, but it is specifically allowed, and it's, I'm sorry.
That's ridiculous.
It's a common practice that's specifically allowed under the Brown Act, and it's designed so that when you have a meeting where 400 people show up, everybody gets a chance to talk. Otherwise, the first people who were picked would, I'm sorry, I'm the city, I'm sorry, I'm speaking right now. I'm answering the question from your, from your wife, actually.
Oh, that's great, thank you.
So.
Thanks for personalizing.
So we don't, so guys, hey, hold on, Adam, stop, stop, stop. We're not going to do a back and forth with my staff. Look, look, we all want to hear it. I want to hear every point. It's critical that you guys come up and discuss what you guys don't like and also what you think you would want in this facility. I don't just want to hear negative, I want to hear actually what you want. So if you'd like to see more open space, if you want to hear more green space, if you guys don't know what that means, if you want more parks, tell me, because I don't like the fact you feel like you haven't been heard. I want to hear from you, and I might not necessarily agree with you, but I have to hear from my citizenry. So I want to have the two minutes. If I don't feel like you've communicated enough, and if you feel like we need more time, this is just discovery right now, guys. There is no vote today, but we want to hear from you. So I want to hear from you, let's not argue, don't beat up Rancho Cordova citizens, the other people that don't necessarily agree with you, I want everyone's opinion on this, because this is ours. This is the first time our city is going to be able to go into another realm. Huh?
Why are you so defensive?
It's not that offensive, because that guy was arguing, this guy, you're arguing with me right now. Well, I appreciate that, but that's what, hold, no, wait, wait.
Can we get the council a question?
So I'm going to go like this, I want to hear from my council, do you council members have any questions before we get to the constituents? Go ahead.
I have some after Linda.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Linda.
Okay, so if you go back to any one of those site plan layouts, there've been several, that, that will do, that's lovely. Okay, so we've got information that it includes between 110 and 130 dwelling units. If you count the little orange boxes, you get to 59 single-family dwelling units is the difference between 59 and 110 or 130 in the multifamily. I'd just like to know, because I've, there's, I heard another suggestion, and, but I need to know how many detached single-family and how many multifamily.
I can answer that.
At this point?
Yeah, certainly.
Realize that it's simple at this point.
No problem. The short answer is yes, the difference is in the multifamily units in that site. The ranges are given for this, because, you know, we are still at a conceptual level, so this is not a final proposal, and so we list ranges because there really is some variability into that, 60 to 65, you know, for sale urban townhomes, and 50 to 60 multifamily apartments. All right. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Donald, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm looking at a PDF, so I'm not exactly sure what slide this would be. I believe, I'm looking at page nine, but it's the one rooted in Rancho Cordova values, and it shows the elements of the RFP that was requested by the city from developers. That, so I'm looking at nine, so it may be like slide 18, I'd like to have it brought up. And Corin, you're probably the one that's going to be able to answer this, but I want to be very, right there, go back. That. I want to be very clear, because I've seen a lot of things on social media that I want to help to dispel, and whether this is just people that are misinformed or are just trying to mislead people. Corin, when the RFP was created and you respond, and your company and your development team responded to it, housing and residential development was a part of that, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And it was a part of all the other submissions as well, not just ours.
It was part of every submission.
Every submission, yes.
Yeah, it was a part of all of the finalist submissions, let's put it that way. Thank you. The next slide I wanted to highlight again is the timeline, and actually, we may not have gotten there yet, so I'm, no, no, I read it, where it says "work completed," and I'm looking at a PDF that says it's slide 75, right there, thank you. And so, again, for those of you who may not have been following this for the past three years now, that the studies that were done by Ballard, the community input that was done, and then even the RFP presentations that included housing as an element for all development teams that were considering this, all included housing. And honestly, in my opinion, in my recollection, from the very first meeting that we ever had to discuss any vision of this site, there was an agreement that there would be housing as a part of this development. Anyone that's telling me different than that and saying that this was snuck in by developers, that this is something that has happened lately, that this is something that's happened since COVID, because we weren't meeting in public and that's when this all happened, in my opinion, is either ill-informed or misleading, period. So with that, the only other thing I would like to say, as we take public comment, is, and Garrett kind of said it here, but be constructive, tell us what you want. The staff isn't here to hide things, the staff and the council aren't pulling a fast one on anybody, and we want to hear you, but we want to hear what you want, not necessarily what you don't want. And so hopefully you can keep that in mind as you focus your attention on this project and on what you hope to see this accomplish. That's all I have, thank you.
All right. So let's go ahead and start, Stacy.
I got one, one question, Garrett.
Sorry.
And I'm trying to anticipate what I think people are going to argue for or against as the element that is probably most likely causing consternation. So our main goal in pursuing this is to light, light the fire of reinvestment along Folsom Boulevard. We want to change what Folsom Boulevard has been, we've invested tens of millions of dollars trying to make that happen, we're getting closer and closer and closer to making it happen, we need a spark. This project is aimed to be the spark with its art component, its public facility component, its good, really good architecture, its proximity to transit. All the consultants say, boy, this is the spot, they've always said this is the spot. But I think what people are most objecting to is the housing. So, you know, we've been to a lot of, a lot of planning, there've been a lot of people looking at this. Everybody who looks at what do you do with a commercial, old commercial corridor like Folsom Boulevard always says you have to do some housing on that boulevard to reinvent it. It's just like a given for creation of a place that'll be effective in lighting that spark. So I'm curious, the consultants we have here, Corin, you can choose who wants to answer the question, but what happens to a project like this? What's the risk or potentially benefit, I guess, of not having housing in this project? What, with regard to that spark, what does, what does housing mean for that spark?
Certainly, I'll spend a little bit of time talking about that, and then I believe we also have Bill Witty, who is the CEO of Related California, on the line, and he can also address it. And so the, there are a whole variety of reasons to include housing. One of the ideas is housing is in close proximity to the community facilities, and I mean adjacent to it, is embedded demand, embedded activity for the public spaces and the communities themselves. The idea about a civic center in an area of community gathering that is useful, you know, morning, noon, midday, and evening, often
Often times, community centers go dark. They are ghost towns in the evening and during the weekends at times as well. And so for this particular project, having a community center that also is embedded and brings residents in close proximity, and this is just Transit Oriented Development 101, a project that is, again, you know, has that activity, has eyes on the, on the ground. I mean, eyes on the street during the evening, during the morning, during the weekends, during the week. Those are also both issues of utilization of the site, but safety as well. And, and again, those are some, some core reasons to do it. And then the last, our whole variety of reasons that we've called out for catalyzing a region. I think that in general, we have seen, for instance, during the pandemic, you know, people were sheltering in place in their homes. You know, we think about diversity of use, you know, you know, either from the, the values of having multiple different types of users and uses and, and, and facilities for people, but also, you know, understanding that we don't necessarily know what's going to happen during the pandemic. It was all about residential. People were in their homes, staying in their homes, and, and they could gather in outdoor spaces. But community facilities and indoor facilities for communities were shut down. So it's just almost like a risk mitigation strategy to also think about a diversity of uses in, in anticipation of uncertain times that we all, I think intuitively, know we're going to continue to face down the road. And then, and then, and then the idea of catalyzing an area. So it is really true that, you know, I think the project will be more successful with this diversity of uses because it is very important to demonstrate the types of investment that can occur on a site like this. Because I think that it's in, in, in a lot of priorities to really attract more investment. And that investment is likely going to be some form of housing mixed in with other types of uses. So those are some thoughts. And certainly Bill can, can add to that and, and re-ask as well.
So if I may, this is Bill Witty. You know, I think Corin covered the landscape pretty well. I would just add a few points. If you look at some of the examples, including in the region, of the more successful sort of public-private efforts, they've inevitably had a mix of uses. And people talk about placemaking, but that's kind of really what it's about. And it works in both directions. There's generally at least some demand in the housing world that likes the mix of uses as opposed to be somewhat isolated. But the other direction I think gets overlooked, which is while the public buildings here are not anticipated to be a major retail center, the hope is that there will be maybe some food and other options available to the wider public. And in order to attract those, it helps to have a morning, noon and night presence and to have residential in close proximity. It's a lot harder story, especially in what are thought to be suburban locations, to have the, or public services, if you will, in isolation with no immediate residential development. There's really no one thing. It's really, as Corin said, kind of a series of those, of those components. And as I think Corin said earlier, the exact plan can be refined. Details can be refined. It's more about the, the conceptual direction.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, if I could just add a quick point. Now that we're going off to public comments, it would really help, you know, they only have two minutes. So if you, when you come up to the podium or on Zoom, if you could say, you know, why you do or don't like housing and what you would like instead and not spend time on he said, she said prior. That would be a really good use to help us make that decision or understand the concerns today.
Excellent. Thank you, Siri. All right, Stacy.
The City Clerk's Office received over 100 emailed public comments on this item. I'm not going to read them off. They've been copied and they're placed in the back of the room for anybody who would like to review them. They're also available on the city's website and they have been posted before this meeting started. So if you have trouble accessing those, please let the City Clerk's Office know. I, I did just go on there to make sure that they're there and they are there. But if you can't find them, let us know and we'll direct you to that location. We have approximately 20-plus speaker cards. I'm going to call on three and then I'm going to jump over to Zoom and allow some of those who've had their hands raised for a very long time to, to also chime in. And then I'll bounce back to the speaker cards. So first, I'm going to call on Kathy Birch. Following Kathy will be Sergio Diaz. And then following Sergio Diaz will be Dana Johnson. So Kathy, you'll have two minutes. Thank you. It can be.
Ready? My name is Kathy Birch. And according to Google, a civic center is defined as a municipal building or complex, often publicly funded with space for conventions, sports events and theatrical entertainment. It defines a community center as a place where people from a community can meet for social, educational or recreational activities. Based on the presentations that we saw in April and last week, it seems to me that Rancho Cordova is planning a community center, so why not, why not make a great one? We should make our community center a family, fun and safe destination that people will prefer more than staying home with a television remote control. I received, I recently visited downtown historical Folsom with our friend Helen. And wow, it was so impressive with so many historical and educational exhibits throughout the area. And they have a beautiful amphitheater with terraced seating made from concrete and astroturf. Can you put it up?
Somebody, we have somebody sharing the screen, so they'll need to stop their PowerPoint presentation so we can jump over here to public comment.
So. Can I put it up?
We're going to put it up in just a second.
Okay. I'll just talk.
Hold on.
I stopped your time, so don't worry.
Wait, wait, wait. I want to see what you're looking at.
You know, happy hour's over, man.
All right.
Okay, ready?
Wait, 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 let's get it up. We got to get up. You know, the council members can't see it.
Oh, wait, do I have to hold it to this thing?
You'll have to do both.
Huh?
You'll have to do both.
Oh.
But give Persephone a second.
Still clicking buttons.
It's okay, I still have.
Man, I didn't realize Corin's there. Hey, man. I didn't realize Corin was in the room. I thought he was on Zoom. Haven't seen him since the pitch.
It worked before.
It's different now.
We got Zoom and stuff like that now. Hold on.
There it is. So that's the amphitheater with the seating is astroturf and the concrete steps down. And there's room for tables on there and all kinds of activities and you see the stage. With a similar amphitheater in the community center in Rancho, we could embrace and showcase lots of local talent, from musicians to magicians and children's choirs and so much more. Rancho could spotlight and celebrate various cultures that make up Rancho Cordova with costumes and customs, dances, songs, exhibits to celebrate the diversities and international characteristics of the citizens here. One example of Folsom using their amphitheater lately was a stage in celebration of the Juneteenth last month, along with their Saturday farmer's market. Members of their city hall, including the mayor and major supporters and benefactor, also attended. Daycare has been suggested for our community center and that is good. So why not also have an adult daycare center and senior centers for, you know, the seniors to play cards and dice and have maybe outdoor tables with chess and checker capabilities? I believe Rancho Cordova Community Center would be an ideal, ideal location for a sheriff's substation for safety as well as promoting good relations with law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sergio Diaz.
Stacy, Stacy, hang on a minute. If we waste time, if we waste the plotting, then not everybody gets to speak. But it's important that we, that you all know that not everybody can see whatever that slide was. And, and especially if you're talking about amphitheaters, seeing how the Folsom Amphitheater differs from the two amphitheaters we already have in Rancho Cordova would be really illustrative.
Okay. All right.
At some point, but we got to get to the public comment.
All right. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. And I understand the presentation today. Thanks so much for that information. It was a hard sell, I admit, from consultants and staff. But, you know, Councilman Terry said that housing was always part of the plan. I've looked several times at this glossy brochure that was sent to our homes and buried in there, it says something about housing. You really have to look hard. Today, when I learned that 110 to 130 units would be included in this site, approximately that would be 4.6 acres of the 10-acre site. That would mean that they were going to be squeezing maybe 20, 25 homes into that 4.6-acre site. So I'm concerned about that. We have a lot of that housing already on the north side of Folsom Boulevard. Secondly, on January 19, 2021, City Council discussed and disapproved the plan to include 252 affordable units in the vicinity of South Rancho Cordova, the Anatolia Sunrise Douglas area. Although council unanimously rejected the proposal of the, of the 252 affordable housing units, none of the council members recused themselves. Notwithstanding that, Vice Mayor Terry, Mayor Gatewood and Councilman Puladi.
Pulapati.
Pulapati, excuse me, live within about 2, 2,500 to 3,000 square feet. You would have thought that they would have recused themselves from that decision. The decision to disapprove the 252 affordable housing units in the Anatolia and Sunrise Douglas area appears to have been based more on the self-interest of council members who favor housing, but just not in their own neighborhoods. The disproportionate number of housing units already in North Rancho Cordova is this. There are approximately 30, 22 affordable housing unit complexes in North Rancho Cordova, which includes this site that we're discussing today.
Your time is up.
There are none in South, South Rancho Cordova. It's a good time to start including some of those where the council members live. Thank you very much.
Just, just a quick comment, Mary.
Go ahead.
Speaker approaches. He mentioned 2,000 or 3,000 feet as the proximity to a particular project as giving rise to a conflict. That's outside of the presumption. I don't know the facts about, that you were referring to. But that's, that's many, many times more than the legal presumption. I'd be happy to talk to you about it offline.
Thank you.
But it's much, much bigger than, than where we presume there would be a conflict.
Next.
I live more than a mile from there.
The next speaker is Dana Johnson. Dana, if you'll come forward.
Mr. Mayor, Council. Mr. Abhar, you, you made a comment earlier, which I appreciate seeing. And it's two words that my comrades and I appreciate you to hear, and that was Veterans Hall. And that's the reason for me to be here this evening and in my other comrades. I was asked to join the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post a few years ago. And I, I questioned why we had to have our meetings at the Moose Lodge and have to pay for the opportunity to have our meetings there. Especially since our history with Mather for over 100 years, I was, I couldn't understand why we didn't have a Veterans Hall or building in Rancho Cordova. Simple request, some of the meeting areas at the new, new place, it would be great if we could have a Veterans Hall there. Not specifically just for veterans, but just a tip of the cap to the, there's got to be several thousand veterans living in Rancho Cordova. We have 450 members in our post. American Legion has a couple hundred. All the people at Mather, in the hospital, that worked there and so forth. So that's a very simple request by what, in lieu of what questions you're going to get later. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your service and thank you for your time.
I'm going to go to Zoom and I'm going to call on Nancy Bowie. Nancy Bowie Thompson will be followed by Anil. And then following Anil will be Cheryl. Nancy, are you there? And can you unmute yourself?
Here, can you hear me? Yes, I've unmuted myself. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you so much. So I'm Nancy Bowie Thompson. I'm the president of the SMUD board and I'm a 20-year resident of Rancho Cordova. I wanted to highlight a project that SMUD is doing to give a little insight. We have over 20 acres that are being developed in a full residential neighborhood that we are looking also at mixed-use infill community. And what we love about this project is that it is a mixed-use location. We're going to have Olympic-sized swimming pool, community garden, childcare, parking and other community amenities. But we, what we really love about it is that we are bringing over 700 multifamily units. Mind you, this is only a 20-acre lot. And we find that this is important and necessary because there's such a shortage in the area. But I also realize that people would usually drive to this area. And SMUD realizes that we are dealing with a climate change issue and that building more housing where people want to work and play is what we need to do as leaders. And so I commend the city for embarking on this project because I love the idea that people could live in a place where they could go, they can enjoy the community amenities without having to use their cars to drive there. This is an amazing project that will put the city of Rancho Cordova on the map. I've lived here for 20 years. I'm from San Francisco. I would have loved to buy into a community like this. But right now, I live in a great community called Vala Ranch, but I have to drive everywhere I go to do anything. We don't even have a dog park by us. I have to drive to the dog park. So I'm going to, I pull a little, I'm going to put a little plug in for a dog park if you can get it in there. But, you know, what I see is this is what's going to put Rancho Cordova on the map because I'm tired of us being seen as second citizens in the city of Sacramento. We are better than the city of Sacramento. We have a council that cares. We have a Rancho Cordova community council that cares. We have a community who wants to stay here. I don't want people leaving to downtown and midtown, as much as I love our SMUD facility. But I've already talked to people. When I tell them about our project, they're like, we can't wait to buy in.
Your time is up.
And so I would love this city to be a beacon. So thank you and I highly encourage this project.
Thank you, Nancy.
Next is Anil. Anil, I'm going to unmute you and you'll have two minutes. Neil, can you unmute yourself? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and city staff. City of Rancho Cordova investment into Civic Center will, will help in revitalizing and transformation of Folsom Boulevard corridor into a more vibrant and urban community. We definitely need a housing attached to the Civic Center. I recently graduated in the Public Administration Master's Degree. And as part of the literature and as part of the, all the developments happening these days is using the mixed-use development project. Some of the definitions from the languages, some of my fellow citizens mentioned about the Google definition. We need to reinvent ourselves. Look at the technology. Look at the, how the new generation is coming up. We need to provide more housing so that we can get the best return on our investment in Civic Center. We all know the history on the Folsom Boulevard. And once we were a main transportation hub and now we lost the charm because of the Mather base and whatnot. Building a Civic Center with mixed-use development will help creating a healthy and safe place to live and work. And this will give us a new economic activity and which will improve the neighborhood and enhance the city image. I think all the citizens and the founders of the city, they all agreed and we all want to project a positive image on the city. Without bringing the people into the Folsom Boulevard neighborhood, we cannot do that one. We need to bring the people, as the presenters mentioned. Without people attaching to those buildings, it will go dark. It will go shady. We, we don't want to happen that one. We want to see the life in those buildings. The only way we can do this is bringing up people and attach those units. We, we need it, we need more housing. We need more housing. We don't want just people move to the nicer neighborhoods like Anatolia and something.
Your time is up.
New, new development and new housing on the Folsom Boulevard. And Civic Center is the right place to build. And I totally support the city council vision and the city administration dedication on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Anil.
Thanks, Anil.
The next speaker is Cheryl Gleason. Cheryl, I've unmuted you. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Mayor Gatewood and Council for your continued and everlasting support of the arts in Rancho Cordova. If, if it weren't for you, the MAC wouldn't exist. And that particular location is our catalyst for our art block, which was adopted in. which was adopted in 2019 in the Art Strategic Plan. The arts are an integral part of economic development in any town, any city. If you want people to move to your town, you want people to come to your town to work, to play, then they've got to have something to do. And the arts are definitely it. The MAC is at its capacity to provide amazing exhibits and classes and movies and concerts. And there's probably a few people sitting there in council that have been to a few of our fun activities. But there is such a need for more. Makerspaces, ceramic studios, welding, whatever that looks like, blast blowing, those are creative incubators. And the artist is the ultimate in small business. Just like our street in Sacramento, artists thrive in the kind of funky areas, but then that becomes the coolest part of town. And that's what this Civic Center is going to do. With potential black box theater, makerspace, gallery, outdoor concerts, and performing arts, this is really something that Ranch of Cordova can hang their hat on. And I will tell you that we have just been selected as a location for the International NCCA Clay Festival next year. That is a huge deal. We're up there with the Crocker.
Your time is up.
Marinetti. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Cheryl.
The next three speakers are in the audience. Jack Mallard, Carl Haas, and Fiza Mogul. Jack, are you here?
If I may, can we have the three people come and sit right up there so we don't have to wait in between so we can get everyone's... Or give them more notice?
Especially for us old people who can't hobble around. Mayor, council members, I just want to make this quick and hopefully under two minutes. I'm going to say shame on Ranch of Cordova. The cities of Folsom, Citrus Heights, and Elk Grove, all three have veteran centers. Their population is probably about the same as Ranch of Cordova's, but the density of veterans in Ranch of Cordova is probably the highest in Sacramento area. Why do we want a veteran center? So folks, veterans, not just VFW, but AMVets, and veterans off the street can come in, talk to somebody, and actually have a place where they can post their squadron insignia, their patches, their remembrances, and have it remembered in this building, in this space. We need a veteran center. Thank you.
I have a slide. I'll wait until my slide's up. Thank you. My name is Carl Haas. I am from Cordova Meadows. I want to say that I'm not against housing, and I want this parcel to be developed. Having said that, I want the council to direct staff to stop moving forward on this project as it is currently proposed. I believe that we all want the same thing, to revitalize Folsom Boulevard, but we have different ideas about how to get there. Attached is our resident vision for the site. The Mills Crossing Civic Center should be a place for the community. Why are we limiting the possibilities for the site by putting housing? Many of the amenities up here are from the community survey results. We've added a walking path in the shape of the Ranch of Cordova city logo, a restaurant, which I believe is vital to bringing this space alive, a bowling alley, multiple small business incubator kiosks, outdoor sports and children's play areas, exercise spaces, games and seating, lots of seating. This place is inviting, and it has over 10 activities, which professional placemakers say is the key to a successful public space. There are many reasons to come here, which is why it will remain active and vibrant. You have your priorities backwards. People choose to live in cities that have great public spaces, not simply because there's a house there. I believe the same can be true of Ranch of Cordova. If you want to attract new development and residents, let's start by creating an awesome place for people to go. That awesome place will attract more people who want to live here, and those more people that live here will attract the development. The project team has said that the city is being ambitious with the amount of civic space being offered by comparison. I'm asking the city to be more ambitious and use the entire site for the community amenities. I want to be clear that when I say more community amenities, I'm not asking for more indoor space. I'm asking for a larger, continuous outdoor gathering space with many different activities to attract lots of people. If cost is an issue, why not build the site in phases? I would much rather build in phases if that means we are making a place for the community. We want it built right. Let's make a statement with this project to the entire region. Let's tell the community, "You matter." Thank you.
This is Fiza Mogul from Lincoln Village. My family participated in providing public feedback on the Civic Center twice, in 2018 and again in December 2020. In both of these instances, housing was not disclosed as being part of the site plans. A complete picture was not provided, so our feedback was uninformed. In fact, I recently received an oversized postcard from the city describing the Civic Center, and yet again, stunningly, details about the housing at the site were missing. How can we participate or support projects fully if important details are unknown? As I'm sure you are painfully aware, housing at the Civic Center site is a huge sticking point for the community. The feedback survey taken around December 2020 was distributed exclusively online via the typical and limited city communications channels. I feel reasonable action was not taken to gather greater input from a more representative and diverse cross-section of our population. Instead of sending me a postcard with incomplete information about housing, a multilingual invitation to participate in the feedback process should go out to every resident. Solicit feedback again. This time, target as many different demographics and channels as possible and openly disclose the housing component in this new feedback survey. Cost analysis of the site, both with and without that housing, should be provided for comparison. When people asked for details about the housing during the July 15 info session, like if locals would be given priority to rent or own these units, and if any of the units would be dedicated to low-income affordability, they said it was up to the developer. I still don't have an answer about this, yet the current master site design may get approved with a huge amount of our land dedicated to housing that I still don't know if I want to support because no one has those details for me. If the housing on this publicly purchased land will not support or diet in the Woll Ranch families, whatever their income, how can you ask us to be okay with that part of the plan? Thank you.
I'm going to jump over to Zoom. Susan Hagerty, you'll be our next speaker. Following Susan is Sharon and Eric, all in Zoom. Susan, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. I am not opposed to the housing. However, I could not say that I'm in favor of it because at this point in time, you have not paid attention to the residents in this area. When the community college was in service, the impaction trying to get off Highway 50 to our homes was terrible. And it hasn't been as bad since COVID, and the community college has been shut down. But certainly, we're not planning that the community college is going to continue to be shut down. Now you're proposing 110 to 130 units. If I figure that every one of those units has at least one car, and half of those units have two cars, we're adding an additional 175 cars to that immediate area trying to get in off of the roads at commute times. In addition to which, it's causing a tremendous impaction in the neighborhood that's behind it, which is where I live. You're also talking about all kinds of events going until all hours of the morning. What about those of us who live in the community who have to get up at 4:00 in the morning because we have to commute to get to our work? And we provide the services that build wonderful facilities, like what you are talking about. And without the skilled laborers that provide these facilities, that build these facilities, you wouldn't be anywhere. But if you're going to have events that keep us up until the middle of the night, how are we supposed to get up and do a solid job? These are buildings where you're expecting they're safe for your loved ones to be. There's lots of issues going on here, and I don't feel that you properly addressed them. The two small streets that are on each side of... Thank you.
The next speaker is Sharon. Sharon, you'll have two minutes, and you've been unmuted.
Thank you. I also, I have a lot of questions, so I'm just going to kind of run through them, and hopefully you guys can answer them afterwards. I had concerns about the parking structure. Number one, how many spaces would it have? Number two, the fact that both the in and the out were on La Loma. So I had concerns about people who do actually live over there and the traffic for that. Also, is the parking structure going to be a pay structure? And is the city going to manage that? How does that work? As far as the housing, I'm not adverse to housing, but I do have concerns about having more lower-income housing in that area. There is already a lot of low-income housing in those areas of Ranch of Cordova. I do know that it would be nice for the college students over there that perhaps some of them might appreciate living nearby. I also wondered if you do put homes on there or condos and you're selling them, how does that work with the city? Who owns that land? Is the city selling the land? Who's going to be developing that land? Do any of the council members have any kind of ownership in any of the companies that are... Hey, it's just a question, you know, for the home development. I'm just asking. Also, I'm curious why the largest indoor event was only $300. It would be really nice to be able to attract some of the really large productions, like some of the Broadway stuff, orchestras. So it seems like it would need to be larger than just a 300-seat thing. It would be nice to have a really nice stage with the orchestra pit.
Sharon, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Eric. Eric, you'll have two minutes, and you've been unmuted.
Hi, thank you very much. Eric, who does the Cordova Meadows. I also am not opposed to a housing element there. However, I do think there's a little bit much, and some of it's a little bit unclear. I understand one of the sites for it is a four-story level multifamily unit. Is there anything preventing the other townhomes from becoming similar to that? As well as, we have enough community around us to support any type of business that's going to go into there as we currently support the community right now. I don't think there should be any more type of housing to go in there, anything drastic up to 150 types of units. That would definitely inundate the traffic around the area. I'm more into more green space, more friendly space we can walk upon. Plus, as the events you guys are planning, are there going to be any community disagreements about what's going on in that place to where we can't ultimately use this place for what it was intended for as a civic center? I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I'm going to call on the five speakers in the audience. Cliff Billings will be first. Following Cliff will be Autumn Eberhart. Following Autumn will be Charles. Charles, I can't read your last name. Lagu? Legu? Lago. Following Charles will be Robert Van Cleef. And following Robert will be Debbie Cortez. Yes.
Honorable Mayor, council members, staff, and fellow citizens, I'm here to advocate for the inclusion of the Veterans Hall in the planning of the new Civic Center. Given the important role that the military has played in the history of Mather in the Ranch of Cordova area and the large number of veterans and military currently living here, I think we need and deserve a building we can call home. A place where those who served and are serving our nation and community can find an opportunity to meet, to discuss veteran organization business, to fellowship and recreate, to receive counseling referrals to social services if needed. And given the opportunity and the proximity to Mather VMC and Veterans Village and Light Rail, a Veterans Hall at the Civic Center would be very advantageous to serving that veteran population others in Ranch of Cordova. I am a member of VFW Post 10125, American Legion Post 709 in Ranch of Cordova, with a combined membership of approximately 480 veterans. We have been trying for many years to get a Veterans Hall in our area. It's about time we have one. Thank you. By the way, VFW Post 10125 receives VFW State and National Achievement Awards this year.
Hey, really quick, before you go, before you go. Your group, did you think that, would you want the veteran center just be just for veterans? But then I heard that you also want to have a senior center? Or is it more like just a veteran center that you would then maintain?
Yeah, we're concentrating on the veteran center. But seniors would be good. A lot of us are seniors.
Okay, well.
And I want to thank Cyrus for his work with the county. We've tried working with county, let's see, for many, many years to get a Veterans Hall. But so far, it hasn't come to fruition, so hopefully it'll happen now. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
I don't mind waiting to go because Lupe was asking to go, so I can go in the next batch.
That's fine.
Good evening, council people. I'm here to remind folks to please listen to the veterans. Our World War II veterans are out the door. My father was one of them. My husband is a Vietnam veteran. We have worked tirelessly for over 20 years downtown to create a memorial. And it's in front of the Capitol and is referred to as El Soldado. We have a memorial where we go and we honor our veterans. Veterans Day and Memorial Day. A memorial hall and a museum is desperately needed in Ranch of Cordova. I remember going to Modesto, if I'm not mistaken. They have a museum. If you want to see a memorial hall and what it does, there's one at Royer Park in Roseville, a memorial hall, and it's been there forever. Memorial halls and museums are not exclusively for veterans. They're for the children, the grandchildren, the families, friends, to partake in their activities as well. It's not just restricted for veterans. When you go to a veterans museum, you see what they have done. We've been to several in El Paso. We visit these when we go. And the reason is because our passion is with the veterans. We've done this for a long time, not just in Ranch of Cordova. We need to showcase these veteran uniforms and stop them from going into the dumpster because I have seen that happen. And I have three uniforms at my house that I rescued from a garbage. We need sculptures in place. We need youth programs for our children, for our young adults.
Your time is up.
Okay, no housing, please.
Next speaker is Charles. Following Charles will be Robert Van Cleef.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get it out of the way.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Charles Lego. I'm the director of the California Capitol Film Office here in Ranch of Cordova. As some of you know, we recently opened a small black box theater a month ago. We had our first three shows, which completely sold out. So if there's ever any proof needed that the arts work in Ranch of Cordova, I think that may have been it. that may have been it. Um, having just opened our own little performing arts center, I'm very excited about this new facility, which will benefit not only the residents of Rancho Cordova, but the region as a whole. A new 300-seat flexible black box theater will allow the presentation of larger acclaimed shows right here in the city that would normally go to Sacramento. In my experience, oh, I'm sorry, it's all backwards here because of the time. There is no doubt that you, as a body, are great supporters of both the performing and visual arts in the city. Mills Crossing Civic Center will simply enhance your vision, and I believe put the city on the map and set it apart from other cities within our region in the promotion and support of the arts as a whole. Supporting the arts feeds the economic engine of a city, builds the community, as I personally saw at our recent shows, where most of the audience were from the city of Rancho Cordova. It gives people confidence in the skills to improve their lives, even if they're not artists themselves. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for your continued support in the arts in Rancho Cordova.
Good evening. Bob Van Cleef from Mobile Country Club on Sunrise. I wasn't here when all this was going on, but I've gone through all the plans, back looking at everything, after all of the conversations I've been having everywhere from in-person to online. And I discovered one thing that was very consistent. The focus was on the civic center. Housing was really not mentioned. There might be one line on one page, and that was it. Because that was not what the people wanted to hear about. They wanted to hear about the civic center, and that's where the focus was. And because of that, we now have a failure to communicate. And that's why the people caught off guard when they saw what was going on here. I took, would suggest that you put the housing component on hold and look again at using the land for something more civic-centerish. But also, if you have housing in there, you can't use what you have, because you'll end up with a major conflict between the people who own and live in the houses and want their babies to be able to sleep nights, and the people who think the civic center is to do stuff in. I would not want to live in a house where there was a big festival going on at my front porch. All of the images and all the visions shown by you are multi-story buildings with the houses on the second floor or above. This is all a mixed-use area. You have to rezone it to use those houses, because they're not legal in those zones. Mixed-use houses would work, but having real houses with people front door on a street that goes away when there's a festival won't work. And if the people behind the fence are complaining about the noise, what do you think you're going to hear from the people living in those houses? Thank you.
Debbie Cortez? Is Debbie Cortez in the room? No? Okay. Um, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to, Autumn, if you'll come forward. Um, Autumn, Conrad, and Matt Cummings, and Donnell Cummings, in that order.
Hi, I'm Autumn Eberhart from Cordova Meadows, and I already sent in a five-page comment about what I'd like at the site, so I'm going to read this instead. I live one mile north of the civic center. When I drive down Folsom Boulevard, I mean, La Loma to Folsom Boulevard, I pass 39 single-family homes, five duplexes, and 137 apartments within two different apartment buildings. Based on the 2010 census, there are about 8,000 people that live between Rod Bowdre and Coloma Road north of Folsom Boulevard. Old Rancho is close to 50,000 people. So when you say the success of this site is dependent on more houses and more people, I think you're wrong. You are treating Cordova Meadows and all the existing neighborhoods around the site as if we're rubble in an abandoned rail yard. The type of development the city is proposing is to bring life to a place that doesn't have any, but we have plenty of life here. What we don't have are any attractions and very limited amenities. At the July 15 meeting, the city manager said that the site was always planned for housing, but the city couldn't find anyone to develop it. He said the city even got to a point of begging developers. If for 20-plus years you can't get something done, isn't it time to go in a new direction? It's time to step away from forcing this to happen by continuing to try and sweeten the pot for developers. The city needs to look toward, how do we build a place for people? We need you to switch to a community-oriented development mentality. This type of development doesn't focus on housing, as houses separate people. Four walls, doors, and windows keep you inside and the rest of the world outside. Which one of you is willing to embrace change and break away from the stale idea about housing on this property? The problem with the Boulevard isn't the lack of housing or a lack of income. It's a lack of interest in the existing commercial property owners to reinvest in their property and attract new businesses. The resident suggested plan that Carl Haas presented earlier--
Your time is up.
Darn, okay, thank you.
Next is Conrad. Following Conrad will be Matt, and then Donnell.
Good evening. I'm going to be the unpopular one tonight, and I'm going to say, uh, I commend the city for this project, and I want it moved forward, forward as soon as possible. This has all the ingredients of the, the night we had, 150 residents talking about 50 things that would make Rancho Cordova a better place. It's got housing. It has a park. It has retail. There was a lot of different designs that were shown, and I can't tell you how many city or town hall meetings that I've been to in the 55 years that I've lived here, where it talked about the different looks of Folsom Boulevard. And all those looks had either two-story housing, two-story retail with sideways parking along Folsom for traffic calming. We've met at Dinkler Hall, Officers Hall, the old library. Uh, Los Rios College has, uh, had numerous divisions or numerous, um, presentations on what that site would look like if they had control of it. Well, that fell through, but, um, now I'm going to speak about our kids. I'm sitting there at the high school, working on kids to get out in college and to come back into this community and take my place as a, as a so-called leader. Where are they going to live? Where can they afford to live? A lot of our residents or a lot of our classmates are along a river, and we know what's down there, uh, what eco lie and all kinds of other stuff, so, um, yeah. I, uh, we talked when we became a city about smart growth, and again, I think that every element that we need to be successful is in this project, and it needs to go so that we can have businesses that love this area and start building businesses and coming here.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Congressman.
Thank you, Conrad.
Uh, Matt Cummings, Capital Village. Uh, first of all, I want to draw your attention to the introduction of the survey that you guys created. I don't have time to read it to you tonight, but nowhere in that survey does it mention housing, nor does it mention feasibility studies, both of which have unnecessarily weighed down this conversation. I don't think the builders of Golden Gate Park or Central Park wasted their time with feasibility studies. Uh, they let the development develop over time, but they built them for the public good. And housing was never included in any of those things, ever. The people behind me and those of you online who have assembled have a reason to be angry. Uh, you've been misled about the real vision behind Civic Center, and I can't blame them for feeling like the workshops were a dog and pony show. The central question here is how do we change the Boulevard? Will housing achieve that? Perhaps. A vibrant civic center with a new city hall, a library, David Sander, and a veterans museum would definitely do that. At this point, only two paths exist for this council. One is to scrap Civic Center, change the name, devote the space to Todd, and promise to develop a Civic Center someplace else along the Boulevard, because you can't have it all. The other option is to slowly develop the Fong property over several years, but as a civic center. Cities are constantly building and improving their space, so why should Rancho Cordova be any different? If cost is truly the central issue, then create a long-term plan to develop the Fong property responsibly over the next decade. Show us numbers that prove your point, Cyrus, and we'll be there to support you. But in its current space, we can't support it. We deserve better, and all of you can do better.
Hi, Donnell Cummings. Residents are gathering and meeting in each other's homes to talk about how to have our voice heard by the people in power. 20 years ago, I would have been talking about incorporation in the county. Sadly, today, it's the same scenario, but in reference to this council. It has been explained that housing will pay for itself and will not be a financial burden, whereas public use requires public funding to upkeep. In not taking on debt and only spending what we can afford to spend, I appreciate that kind of stewardship. However, we also need leadership who tells us to dream big and then finds a way to make it happen. You did that. You told us to dream big, and we did. Now we are asking you to do your job. Find a way to make it a reality. I think we need to decide what it is we want to offer our community. Do we say, offer housing development alongside some public use space just to be done with it? Or do we step back and figure out how to make those workshops and community focus a reality? Our city manager recently shared that it took 15 years and $15 million to complete the Folsom Boulevard beautification project. I think we, excuse me, I think we can all agree that it looks amazing. There's new lighting, sidewalks, and landscaping. It's upgraded the entire landscape. Imagine if we had not bothered, because, well, it took 15 years. Stop this process. Go back to the drawing board. If you want to make this a Todd, then do so. If you want to make this a residential mixed use, then do so. But do not proceed to tell us that this is our civic center, unless you are prepared to give this community what they envisioned. What you encouraged us to dream was possible. We deserve better, a better civic center, and if need be, a better council. Thank you.
I'm going, I'm going to jump over to Zoom. Uh, I'm going to call on Eric. Eric, you'll have two minutes. Following Eric will be JP, and following JP will be Michelle. Eric, can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, I'm unmuted, but you've already gone through me, so I'm going to have to--
Oh, thank you. Sorry. All right, I'm going to jump to JP.
Can you hear me?
Yes. You'll have two minutes, JP.
Thank you. Hey, thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. Um, as somebody who started my life off in Rancho and has been a part of Rancho for a long time, um, I, I totally understand the concerns that I hear about mixing a civic center with residential development, and, and it's scary, and it maybe not what we envisioned, but overall, when I look at the plan from my perspective, I think it's a great start. It may not be everything everybody wants, but it's definitely something that that area needs. And with all the development in Rancho right now, and all the different opportunities that are being developed to support the citizens of the community, I think this gives a huge first step in the right direction, considering how long it's taken to get a number of projects done in Rancho. And I think people should really look at what the possibilities are with this development as opposed to what it's not. And I really support this development, and I think the city council did a great job, and I'm really excited to see what comes out of this. So thank you guys for your time.
Following JP will be Michelle, and then continuing on in Zoom, Cami will follow Michelle, and then Egiro? Thank you. Michelle, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. Hi, I'm Michelle Hillen-Neufur. I'm a resident of Rancho Cordova and the Executive Director of NorCal School of the Arts. NorCal School of the Arts is a nonprofit organization providing arts education programs, and I want to thank the council for your support of NorCal through the Enhancement Fund Grant for our theater program at Williamson Elementary. NorCal School of the Arts hopes to provide arts education and performance opportunities for Rancho Cordova students at the Mills Crossing Civic Center, where we hope to activate that space through performing arts classes and performance opportunities for the young people of Rancho Cordova. I want to thank the council for keeping the arts at the heart of the Mills Crossing Civic Center, and appreciate that the project responds to the city's arts and cultural master plan as an arts hub. This arts and cul, uh, arts and culture center will allow arts organizations an opportunity to bring the community together around arts and cultural events, celebrating the diversity of our city. It will help stimulate economic growth in the city of Rancho Cordova, as studies show that when people go to arts events, they spend an average of $31 a person in residual activities such as dinner and shopping. And I want to add that creating a site that is both performing arts and visual arts will also be unique to the region, and it will put Rancho Cordova on the map as a city that is committed to the arts and supports the creative sector both legally, locally, and regionally. The Mills Crossing Civic Center will help provide arts engagement opportunities for young people who need the arts as a means to find their identity and deal with mental health issues. This pandemic has isolated young people and caused anxiety and depression, and the arts help people express their feelings. We know that theater arts helps students learn how to activate their creativity, develop communication skills, critical thinking skills, and most importantly during this pandemic, they help students connect with each other, just like the arts at an arts hub like Mills Crossing Civic Center will help us all to connect as a community. We need the arts right now. There is no recovery without creativity, and thank you for making a smart investment in an arts and cultural center for the city of Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
The next speaker is Cami. Cami, you'll have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Cami Kieros. I'm a long-time, uh, business owner and current homeowner in Cordova Meadows. Uh, I would like to start, in the interest of time, to request that the city stop moving forward with the current plan until a formal traffic study, as well as additional studies and input, including discussion on possible future library locations and veterans other locations, as well as additional disclosures provided to the community, such as where the funds or value from the private sale of public space is going. Um, I would like to, um, while we, we, the public appreciate what the council intention is for improving the city, we are trying to tell you that your communications to the public have failed, um, and you are failing to listen to the time. Um, it's been very disheartening, um, to see the lack of public transparency, including the language used in most of the communications, um, in the visioning, the developer submissions, for instance. Um, the housing is often hidden behind words like mixed use or RMU. Um, so, again, we are trying to tell you, your communications to the public have failed, and we'd like to do, have you do a better job. And focus, and our focus is to get more of our public space, um, for public use. Having us, you know, people talk to us about a half an acre of, of, uh, street as part of the public space is, um, not, is disingenuous, honestly. Um, and saying a half an acre of grounds surrounding a apartment complex, I mean, when's the last time you played ball right outside the, an apartment complex window within 10 feet of a sidewalk? Um, that's not going to happen, so, uh, um, talking about all the positives--
Your time is up.
--constantly in communication. Thank you.
The next speaker is Egiro.
Good afternoon, uh, good evening, rather, it's 9:20. Um, uh, my name is Adro Coro, and it's kind of like Pedro with the A sound. I know it's difficult to pronounce, but it's Adro. Want to make sure you guys highlighted that. And I'm the Policy Director for the Sacramento Housing Alliance. I would like to encourage the council, uh, to really look at programs that will promote affordable homes in the Mills District and throughout the revitalizing, revitalization efforts throughout the quarter. I would like to really know if there are plans or consideration to consult or work with nonprofit affordable housing developers to deliberate and make feasible-- with nonprofit affordable housing developers to deliberate and make feasible, de-restricted affordable homes in the Mills District. With increased development in areas that were previously disinvested comes displacement risk, and we want to make sure that the residents that are currently living in the area can be able to benefit from these increased amenities that you're planning. The council should prioritize and maintain affordability as much as possible and centralize all updates and development proposals on the Mills Crossing Civic Center webpage. Thank you.
I'm going to call on those in the room. Helen Whalen-Bashaw will be next. Following Helen will be Shira. Shira, thank you. Following Shira will be Diana Rollers. Following Diana will be Ann Richardson.
Hi, I'm Helen Whalen-Bashaw. I live in Chira Grande area. One thing I think that is lacking, we need an independent event coordinator that's going to promote the area. This person should report directly to the city manager. We also, I like the solar aspect, however, I want to know who benefits from the energy it produces. I'm glad to see the large trees are staying, because this is a city of trees, not like another development. I would like to know what is the impact of additional housing going to do to the saturated schools in the area? I'm looking at the, on Thursday's meeting, they mentioned closing the streets to city fairs. How are those houses going to coordinate and leave when we have a city, a street fairs? So maybe you need to have another exit for those houses, because you're producing a lot of cars for those houses. They need someplace to go. And I do believe the streets in that area need to be no parking zones. So this is going to really create a burden, because if you're going to have all these children and everybody using it, there should be no street parking in that area. It needs to be a safe environment for people with children. I do agree there should be a dog park. You're putting that many houses in. People have pets, even they walk their cats. So you need something that will... Hey, I've walked my cat. So you need something that will actually allow the public to really enjoy that area. But, you know, if you're going to put housing in it, please take in consideration the impact on all those houses in that area and where the cars are going to go. And a traffic study is definitely needed. Thank you.
Shira is next, and then following Shira, Shira?
Shira.
Sarah. No, it's okay. He-man-Shira.
Sorry. Following Shira is Diane Rogers. Sorry earlier.
No worries. Hi, my name is Shira Lane. I am the executive director and founder of The Atrium. We are a creative innovation center for sustainability. I want to thank the city here for being so forward-thinking about putting arts front and center. At The Atrium, we held a 34,000-square-foot building, where we had 6,000 square feet of gallery space. We held zero-waste events, and we also had lab center and maker spaces. So we are all about the connection between the creative sector and the sustainability sector. So we utilize the creative economy to build a circular economy. And if anybody wants to know what that is, I'm happy to talk, side-talk to you about circular economy for hours. I would like to build, our goal is to build a kind, creative, and sustainable future, and we do that using the creative sector. I would be honored to come and consider, because right now, we've moved from our 34,000 square feet due to COVID to a 3,500-square-foot space. We are looking for artist studios. I have so many. We have 500 artists that we work with, and many of them are here in Rancho Cordova. So I would be honored to work with each one of you. I've heard many people have worked with the city of Rancho Cordova, and I've heard only wonderful things, and I look forward to connecting with you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My responsibility as chamber president is to be the voice of and for our business community. I've personally attended nearly every one of the visiting sessions, and I can assure you that housing was always part of the conversation. A young woman from Cordova High spoke up at one of those early sessions and asked for consideration of mental health facilities for our young people. Her presence made a difference. This matter is now part of the conversation, and under priority programs, there are specific references to teen activity center, mental health services, as well as classroom and study rooms. If there's anything that we can learn from the last 16 months, the businesses who have survived this pandemic did so because they were flexible. The rigid, single-focused, inflexible, and uncompromising did not. Those businesses are shuttered and gone. How does this relate to the civic center? Community investment must be flexible, adapting to the needs and resources as our city evolves. Today, mixed-use development is a successful business model, as it has been for centuries in other parts of the world. The civic center will be a catalyst for economic growth. Thriving communities promote the symbiotic relationship between private and public-sector elements, common and public areas, and business, and yes, housing. You've all seen the slow and very painful death of our malls throughout this region. Those willing to try and remain have embraced the mixed-use concept. Adding housing is the primary element added in nearly all of those efforts. The civic center will continue the revitalization of Folsom Boulevard, create a space for sustainable, healthier, more efficient, and equitable places to learn and work and live, offers a range of uses and services for our residents and visitors. I assure you, businesses considering a move to Rancho Cordova place sustainability and diversity at the top of their list. We urge you to be pler out of Rancho Cordova, welcome new businesses, welcome new visitors, and welcome new residents. And as a side note, you might find it interesting that the Folsom program did also have an element of housing. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ann Richardson. Following Ann Richardson will be Mary Nessel and Kimberly Wilson.
Good evening, council. My name is Ann Richardson. I was born and raised in Rancho Cordova, and I'm a homeowner over in Cordova Gardens. I ask the council to stop any further discussion on housing. This is our community, not the community of just 110 or 130 people, and not those to come to Rancho Cordova. It's ours, those that are here. Regardless of what you say now, the idea of the project was sold on a place for the community, all of the community. Key word is "all." I'm opposed to any planning for housing for the mere fact that housing serves only a select few. It does not serve all the community. If you feel Rancho Cordova needs more housing, put it elsewhere. Put those apartments over in Anatolia, over in Stone Creek, in some of the new areas. As already has been said, we have a lot of apartments. We have housing here in Rancho Cordova. I will only support moving forward if the planning only provides for all of the community. There are businesses that you can bring in or make it so that they want to come. You've talked about kind of half-heartedly a bowling alley or a theater. It was laughed off, but those are things that we go elsewhere for. Make it so that those businesses want to come here. We do need a large children's care facility, a large senior center. There are older people here that are funding this entire community. Create a trade center for the youth or for young adults to learn a trade. There's more to businesses than being on a computer. We need tradesmen. Provide a center for these people and partner with local businesses to make that happen. I request a formal feasibility study to be prepared for 100% usage of the 10 acres to serve all the community.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Mary, you're up next.
Good evening. My name is Mary Nessel. When I watched the video and the presentation from RIO, it's just fabulous if it was on the entire 10 acres. I recently watched a video of an incredible TED Talk by a New York City planner by the name of Amanda Burden. She made it her mission to create great public spaces, and I was inspired by her video, so I have some comments from her. She says, and I quote, "If there is any one lesson I have learned in my life as a city planner, it is that public spaces have power. It's not just the number of people using them, it's the even greater number of people who feel better about their city just knowing that they are there." She also says that public space has to be fought for, and then for them to be successful, somebody has to think very hard about every detail. Public spaces always need vigilant champions, not only to claim them at the outset for public use, but to design them for the people that use them. One of her greatest successes was a place called The High Line, an elevated railway that ran through three neighborhoods. When the trains stopped, it became a self-seated weedy landscape. She saved it from demolition, and now it is widely known and phenomenally popular. But she says it is the most contested public space in the city, because commercial interests will always battle against public space. The city has taken 18 years to get this youth center started. The Parks Department took six years to replace the swimming pool. Why are we moving forward so fast, three years, to do this community center as you currently see fit to do it? I say, please, take a step back, think outside the box. Let's really try and make the entire 10 acres work. If you can prove to us that that won't work, then maybe we'll not fight so hard against you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Wilson, and I live in Rancho Cordova, Cordova Meadows on Luloma Drive. I support the elimination of housing that replaces public spaces. If you lost senior housing, artisan residence, or the apartments above the public buildings might be acceptable. We don't want to take away land available for public use. The housing could be located above public parking spaces. Access should be separate from the parking. Again, we do not want housing at the civic center to take away from public space. Who financially benefits from the selling of the houses? I would like that question answered, and also I would like rooftop spaces, gardens available for public gatherings as well on the rooftops. More restaurants and shops should be included, more green spaces, water features, a community garden space, barbecue spaces, picnic tables, place for food trucks, better communication with residents, a traffic congestion and public transportation study, a place for the community to congregate, which is what we all want. The library could be here at this place, a veterans' hall. We also should take into account a soundproof retaining wall, so the people that live on Luloma don't have to hear all the fun stuff that's happening unless they want to. Public bathrooms. The only park that I have access to at walking distance is Taylor Park, and I've lived there for 20 years, and there is no place for me to pee unless I walk home. Is the housing necessary for the plans to go through? Is it necessary? Where's the money to pay for the space coming from? What is being removed from the previously proposed plan to make room for the housing? What percentage of the space for the public is parking? How many spaces are going to be available? Is there going to be safety? Is there, what's going to happen with the safety on that? Parking should be in the back, closer to the residential, as opposed to Folsom Boulevard, and we should definitely have maker spaces. We definitely need a feasibility study that includes traffic, public transportation between the youth center, the other CRPD sites, yay, on the new youth center.
Your time is up.
Okay. Old Rancho is much effort as new Rancho. Excuse me.
Transitioning over to Zoom, I'm calling on Austin Allen. Austin, you'll have two minutes. Following Austin is Deborah Cortez and John Morris.
Hello, my name is Austin Allen from the White Rock neighborhood. Thank you, Mayor Gatewood, and council for listening to all of us tonight. I support transit-oriented mixed-use design. I want to see our light rail line activated with a great popular civic center. I support the inclusion of some affordable housing. I'd like to see much more open green space dedicated to public space. I will add, however, the mailer I received certainly did not explain the extent of housing on the site. Clear and transparent communication is imperative to this process. While I am relatively new to Rancho Cordova, the discussions we are having here are not new. I grew up in Petaluma, and during the time I lived there, the town fiercely debated over the redevelopment of the downtown theater district from 2003 to 2014. It is now a vibrant mixed-use community center. How'd they do it right? They included mixed-use multi-story buildings. The bottom stories, commercial. The upper stories are residential. In the plan presented tonight, many of the example buildings are this exact configuration. This is the exact type of development that ended up working very well in my hometown. Second, easy suggestion, food truck courts. It's a simple example, but it's very popular. Thanks for your time, and thanks for listening to your community.
Next speaker is Deborah Cortez. Deborah, you'll have two minutes.
Hi. Sorry I had to leave early. I was there, but I had to go. But I just wanted to say that I please halt the decision on this current plan and that I think we need more time to talk about it, more community input. I think that the housing element is too much, just too much there. We already have, like Autumn said, just a numerous amount of housing there, low-income, affordable housing. I think we need more open space. I think a lot of people had a lot of great ideas, the food trucks, the, you know, the walking track, bathrooms, whatever. I just think we need to postpone the vote on this. I think we also, in the future, with future projects, need more community input on this, and the flyers did not say the amount of housing that was going in. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
The next speaker is John Morris. John, you'll have two minutes.
Hi, this is John Morris. I've lived in Rancho Cordova for... Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're good. Keep going.
All right. I've lived in Rancho Cordova for five or six years. I love it here. I really appreciate the council, the mayor, the staff, and the people, obviously, for showing up. Obviously, everyone cares about this and has an opinion. I am against the housing because it uses tax dollars, and I would like to see public space used for the public, and then finding a place to shift around or change the area so that we don't use, we use housing either, either just say, hey, this is, we're going to use public housing right here. We need that public housing for the people that can't afford it, and just do that right there and move the civic center. Or do something different so that we can work with it and that we are doing something that everybody would like. I think, I see a lot of people just have a lot of opinions about this, and that's wonderful, but I think we need to relook at this and reexamine. So I know it's late, so I'm going to end early. Thank you so much.
Mayor Gatewood, that's all the public comment that we have at this time on this item.
All right, thank you. All right. Our council. Is everyone ready? All right, let's start with our most senior. Let's start with my planner, Linda. Are you online? There she is. All right.
Okay. Four pages and a million notes later. Okay, the first thing, I have tried to be consistent that I personally would like to see more open space. You can't hear me, and I can't, and I can't talk if you're going to do that. Number one, if you compare the Village Green, and this is a really critical comparison, if you compare the Village Green with the, with this area, the Village Green is five acres. We're talking about a little less than 10 acres here. So if you think about the Village Green, and I would hope to goodness that everybody who's spoken tonight has been to an event there, whether it was the International Festival or Movie in the Park or the Christmas tree lighting or something, you know, even if you went to Lowe's, I would hope you're familiar with Village and the Village Green. And if you superimpose that on this site and you think about the 3,000 people that the International Festival attracts, and figure out how you're going to put that number of people into the very small open space that is currently designed, for me personally, that's a concern. I do support housing on this product, on this project, because as a planner, there is no question that we use these words like activation, and the idea... no question that we use these words like activation and the, the, the idea, here again, look at the Village Green. I can guarantee you, everybody who lives in those townhouses around the Village Green knows that there are festivals there, they know that there are times when the streets are closed, they know when the ti, the times when the streets have, are lined with food trucks because there is an event going on there. And some of the events are really small, like a couple of the theaters that we've got that are, that are now performing in the amphitheater there, and some of the events are really big, like the International Festival. But, but the, but the idea that there's going to be a conflict between the people who live on the property and the people and, and may not like the events that are going on at Mills Crossing, that's, that's not valid because they're, they're there because they want to be there. I will tell you that if you compare that to the beautiful Citrus Heights Civic Center, a lot of us have been to the Citrus Heights Civic Center since they opened it, but it is completely isolated on a street that has nothing but public buildings and so you can't walk to this, to the Citrus Heights Civic Center. Either that building is open or the public people living.
Hey Linda, really quick, really quick, you froze up real quick. Can you go back? You were right mid, you looked like you took a breath and then stopped, so.
Okay.
You can't walk to the Citrus Heights Civic Center.
Thank you. You can't walk to the Citrus Heights Civic Center. So out of that building, this is a classic building of a single use building, okay? Either the building is open because there's an event there or the building is not open and it's a completely dead space. We're trying to create the opposite here. I can tell you the entire time that my parents were stationed in Taiwan, outside Taipei, every morning, every public square, every park was full of wonderful people doing Tai Chi. Those are the kinds of activities that you get twenty-four seven if you live in an area that provides that kind of true mixed use. It is important that we look back and remember that the Chamber of Commerce before we were incorporated, had done some research on how to remodel Folsom Boulevard. As a matter of fact, I chaired the Cordova Commercial Revitalization Plan that was put together after anticipation of Mather closing because we knew we were going to have a lot of empty buildings. And so right after we incorporated, remember that we had that company called Buxton come and do the plans for how to remodel the Boulevard? And every one of their plans included a commercial node at the major intersections and housing in between, which is how we ended up with, part of the reason we ended up with housing at the Stagger Inn site. And the housing that's being, that we've just approved there is not brand new housing. It is the culmination of many years of trying to get funding for the rest of the housing that was supposed to be there. Remember that the age old adage is that retail follows rooftops. And in order to create more retail on Folsom Boulevard, we're going to have to create more rooftops in a variety of different places. Remember that our best example around here is Capital Village. There were several people who commented about the fact that it's creative. It is. It's one of only five new urbanist village, villages that were built in the Sacramento region and they were written up in the Wall Street Journal. And so if you look at the fact that we have a mix of commercial, we have sixteen restaurants you can eat around the world and, and to complete the area, we built the BDX Apartments. So there's now about five different housing products in there and every one of them contributes by walking to Lowe's, walking to Yogurtville, walking to Chili's, and all of the thirty-five thousand jobs that surround it walk over in the daytime and eat at lunch. Our biggest issue is the fact that there's not enough people for all the restaurants to stay open at night. But what we're trying to do here is a mix of uses that is really quite similar to what we've got at Capital Village. And I'm sorry that, no, I'm not going to go there. That's really the goal here. We have to activate this area in order to activate the Boulevard, take advantage of the real arts district that we probably have here, do the district branding that somebody talked about early on. Look at the Sunrise Marketplace. They are a gorgeous example of district branding. Even today, even though the mall is, is in decline and needs remodeling, they still have all those banners down the middle of the street. When you enter the Sunrise Marketplace, the street signs change, the whole streetscape changes and you know that you are in a place that is true placemaking and that's what we're trying to do here.
Great. Thank you, Linda.
Thanks, Gary.
All right. I'm going to start off, I'm going to let David. David, what do you think?
Well, you know, this has never happened before and I can't think it's a coincidence, but my cat came and joined me at this desk. I'm relatively certain he heard Cat Park. I don't know why else this would have happened.
He wants you to take him for a walk.
Oh, for a walk to the Cat Park? Yeah, that, to the Cat Park. Got to thank Helen for that. That is an awesome idea. You know, this is, this is such a long journey we have been on in this community. If I think about, you know, moving here twenty-five years ago roughly and seeing the potential and getting elected to a new city council and thinking, oh, we can just do this, just turn the key on this economic development, it'll be easy. And, you know, the things I thought we could do in a couple of years are happening twenty years later because this is hard, hard work. And what we found out in the interim is that we're not alone in this. This problem is all over the place in the United States. Particularly if you've got an older suburban area and you've got old commercial corridors, the economics of the place get messed up, people move off to the newer, shinier neighborhood down the street, down the road, retail chases them when they do that. Amazon comes along and wipes out a bunch of retail and places become disinvested, you know, the, the business capital leaves, the local government struggles for lack of resource to maintain things and keep it up. And we became a city to stop that awful cycle and we have been doing, I think, a good job of that. If you look at any metric that you can apply to Rancho Cordova, everything has gone positive. When previously, and if you look at places that haven't had active governance like we have, they've gone negative. Just the crime rates, one really great example. And you can talk about economic development, average incomes of residents, new opportunities for people who live here and the city's significant reinvestment in the old, old infrastructure. But even with all that, with fifty million spent on Folsom Boulevard over those years, taking over RT's management of the maintenance of their landscaping at their site because we wanted it maintained this well and they were only going to spend this much. This much wasn't good enough, this much felt like disorder. We wanted something clean, neat. And there's another cat. He went to Linda's house. This is really hard work and there's really hard decisions to make. I mean, how do you decide where to spend resources? Do you spend them on, on girls softball because the school district has matching dollars or do you spend them on a youth center or do you spend it widening a street? They're all tough decisions and this is just another one of those tough decisions. But I can tell you, you know, having lived on, on, not far from this site, I guess a couple of miles of, of this site, off of Folsom Boulevard for many years, all of us have wanted change here. I don't think there's anyone in Rancho Cordova who hasn't wanted change here. And the previous owner, who's been referred to here tonight, was not our friend in this. He was a, a major opponent to improvement at this site. You may recall the horribly decrepit state that this, this project, this parcel was in years ago when we had volunteers, this is so outrageous to me, volunteers from the neighborhood went to a privately owned parcel to clean it up because we could not get the owner to do so. Now we have the tools with code enforcement that we wouldn't have to go to that extreme, but those neighbors and I and you, some of you out there, were so motivated to improve this corridor that we did that together as volunteers. Unfortunately or fortunately, that owner passed away and his heirs were willing to sell it. So all of our previous battles trying to get the college landed there went away. We ended up with this project and this is, this parcel, and this is not just any parcel along Folsom Boulevard. This is the one that every consultant for twenty-five years who's come through Rancho Cordova and looked at it, every developer who's come through Rancho Cordova and looked at it says, that's the hotspot. Because you've got, Linda, I don't know what the number is, fifty thousand cars running by this project? I mean, it's something like that on, on Mills, on, on Mather Road right there. It's enormous traffic.
Mather and, and Folsom.
Mather and then to Folsom, right. So it's, you know, adjacent roughly to this project. That's an enormous asset when it comes to a facility like this and the value of, of development there. You've got light rail right there, which means there may be federal dollars available to help if you're building a tot. You've got this whole new concept of how people want to live densely in townhomes without yards and we don't offer any of that in Rancho Cordova. There is really no place to, to live that way and we've been chided by economic developers over the years for not having it. We were this close to a major Google facility and failed because we didn't have the right type of housing. They wanted high-end rental and a higher, high-end ownership of some kind. They wanted options below that for people in a dense transit oriented way. That's what they wanted for their workers and we didn't have it. And we've seen that story time and time again with, with economic development in Rancho Cordova. So there's so many things that feed into this decision, our desire to get better, our economic development, and of course, our kids. The opportunity is the kids growing up in this neighborhood now are missing because they don't have, in my mind, adequate facilities. They don't have enough opportunities to explore art. They don't have, they don't have enough recreation opportunities, which is why we've been investing in that, which is why we're doing the, the youth center. Our kids deserve a better future and this is part of that. And this art strategy that you've heard a lot about tonight is a key part of that because it's not just about the kids, that's a huge part of it for me, but it's also about economic development because as one speaker tonight mentioned, when you've got these corridors that, you know, we see all over the country that are sort of downtrodden and tough and no one knows what to do with those land uses because they were, they were planned, I mean, this was planned to be Highway Fifty. That's what it was. This was Highway Fifty before Highway Fifty was built. That's why we have these weird land uses along here. It's not planned or wasn't designed for what we need it to be today, but art uses in those odd spaces and awkward spaces can be really stimulating to economic development. That's why we're talking about the theater here. Also because our studies said there is room in the market for one and as you heard tonight, there are a lot of partners who are interested in, in partnering with us to make those spaces come alive. So this site, I think, from the time the city got a hold of it, was not designed to be a civic center. I actually disagreed with that title because I thought it was misleading. Community center, as someone pointed out, might be a better definitional use. I just think of this as the Mills Crossing development and I'm asking, what is necessary to make that thing be the spark for future economic activity along Folsom Boulevard? That's basically my bottom line. The arts for kids are a bonus, the amenities for people deliver a bonus. All the other benefits are, are bonuses to that and the fact that we can put civic amenities in here on this side of town is really important, but also a bonus because the biggest picture is we have to reinvent Folsom Boulevard. So all of my questions tonight and my concern going forward is going to be basically focused on, on that question. And if the answer comes back that housing is an absolutely necessary piece to redeveloping Folsom Boulevard, then I'm, I'm going to say that's what the science says and I don't want to argue against it. If, if the answer comes back that, oh, well, we can do all this and spark redevelopment without housing, I would probably be supportive of that. But at this point, I think I'm going to agree with my colleague Linda. More space in this plan for public amenity, more open space is something that interests me. If the housing were reduced, I would not be opposed to that. I am still very interested in sort of what the finances are for this thing going forward. We've talked to an awful lot of potential partners, but I haven't seen any kind of real breakdown of what those might be. And I understand some of those may be confidential because, you know, when you're making deals or, or real estate deals with a partner potentially, you can't public, or you don't want to publicly disclose that because someone else may come along and scoop you on, you know, the organization that really wants to be in Rancho Cordova, but, but might be scooped if we, if we were too public with it. So I really think though, we need to, we need to talk to the public more about those amenities and how they fit into the overall plan and I need some sort of a feeling for, for how this thing pencils out going forward. But we cannot lose the spark to redevelopment and reinvestment on Folsom Boulevard. That's the utmost.
All right. Thank you, David. All right. Siri, you were here at the beginning, but we're going to go ahead and let you get, get your opinion on this. So what do you think?
Okay, so from my perspective, right? So there are a lot of questions that need to be answered and in fact, a good thanks to a lot of people that came out today to voice their opinion on, on this subject. So I'm, I'm going to put my engineering hat on and it helps to remove the emotion out of it, right? So there's a lot of, you know, we were not aware of housing on this property, you know, that's, that's, that's history. So let's take it out from here. So what is the goal? It is to revitalize and activate this corridor. So what does it take to revitalize and activate this corridor? I mean, I was really excited when I saw that whole water feature front and that, you know, a huge public space. So I love the fact that, you know, we want more public space. That's what excited me to this property, but then you got to see, what, what, what is, what does it take to revitalize this, right? Do we need housing? So to David's question, right? So some of the questions that we do need answers is who benefits financially from the addition of this housing? So what, what, what is that? So, and, so can we take a step back? Can we work in phases? That was a question that I had. I think I, I remember Micah at the start of this conversation said, you know, we need to get all of this done in one phase in order to make this work. So that's another question. So can we work in phases? Now, if I were to talk in binary numbers, right? So when I was running my campaign, I had three priorities, education, safety and economic development. So when we talk about housing on this project, education doesn't play a role. Safety? Having housing on this property actually activates that corridor, so it makes a huge play in that safety piece of it. Having housing actually improves economic development, so it actually plays a big part in economic development. So from my priorities, what I ran for, what I prioritized, having housing in this picture actually works for two out of my three top priorities. That said, we need to see, I'm, I'm absolutely open to the option of the housing, you know, if we need to reduce the number of housing, you know, what does it take to make this work? So that's the goal. So if we were to see what actually needs to happen in order to make this work for the benefit of the city, for the benefit of the people, that's how I feel that this project should proceed.
Thank you, Siri. All right, Donald, you're up.
Okay, um, let me start with the things that I don't think I heard. I had to go shut my door because my cats were trying to come in. I think they heard your guys' cat. But I'm going to start with this question about the VFW. I believe the city is working towards a path of a different site for that, but I would say that until that, until that's built and sited and done, there's absolutely no reason not to think that we couldn't figure out a place to house the VFW within the site. And I'll go one step further and say, this project's not going forward so long as I'm on council and doesn't include the VFW. Okay? So for those of you who are interested in a site for the VFW, we will figure out how to accommodate that. I don't see that as a problem at all. I appreciate the I appreciate the folks that came and spoke very passionately about that. Honestly, if you had sent me an email, I would have given you the exact same answer. Um, so, I don't know if any of my colleagues want to disagree with me, but there's no reason that we can't find space for the VFW within this, within this until we can find you somewhere better. Um, okay. So, and I wrote some other things down here. A lot of this is from emails and maybe, maybe not necessarily comments tonight. Um, a- and so I don't, I'm not trying to poke holes in people's arguments or the things like that. But I also want to kind of explain some of the feasibility. So, when I started on the council, there was a plan for, uh, an entertainment center that, to be honest with you, was the epitome of design by committee. It was the armadillo of, of, of entertainment centers. It had something for everyone to hate. Uh, and it was so big and so unwieldy that literally there was nothing else in the country that had ever been built that looked like this. Therefore, there was no way to finance it because there was no one that had experience in running something that looked like that. Um, you know, it had a movie theater, a bowling alley, a rots course, a laser tag. Then, then people wanted meeting spaces and they put meeting space in it. And literally they got this thing that, that, that even when I was trying to assist them in trying to find financing with different banks, the banks were literally like, "We don't know how to, how to collateralize this because we don't know what it's worth if this failed." And by the way, the people that want to borrow the money have never run anything like this and there's no one in the country that's ever run anything like this. Um, and so, I bring that all up because when they were designing that thing, they did a lot of community outreach and a lot of people said, "I want this, and I want this, and I want this." And they just kept throwing that into the plan. And, by the way, that developer was one of the ones that, that made a proposal here. Um, and they kind of threw that same project here that failed. It had already failed, it was never going to get financed. Uh, and it's a very, you know, well-thought-of, you know, successful developer to try to put it together and it just didn't work. Um, and one example of that, that I know is in this community map that I really appreciate. And I'll, I'll, I'll talk about some other things I'm open that I, that I saw in that mapping. But this idea of like a bowling alley, um, and I believe on the map it said a modern bowling alley. And then right below it, it said, "And compare that to Capital Bowl in West Sacramento." And I was really interested about that reference. And I actually went to their website and learned that that was built in the early nineteen fifties. So, the modern bowling alley example is seventy years old. Um, and so, when we talk about even what a bowling alley looks like today, the last bowling alley that was built around here was Punch Bowl next to Golden One that I believe has eight lanes and has ten times more bar and restaurant space. They just don't build some of the things that I think we're hearing people asking for. Like, that is not what, even if, if we were to engage in that, and trust me, ever since I got on council, there is a, there's a contingent of people that say, "I want a bowling alley." It's not lost on us, you know, trying to find that. But we haven't had a developer that, in that business, that's come to us and said, "Yeah, I want to build that here." So, we can't just magically decide. I mean, I had a colleague for years that said, "I can't buy a suit in Rancho Dova and until we have, you know, somewhere for me to buy a suit, we're not a complete city." Meanwhile, Joseph A. Bank and the Men's Warehouse have been trying to hostilely take each other over for fifteen years because there's not a market anymore for make, for buying suits. Um, a lot less of us wear suits today. And I work at a bank and I don't wear a suit. Um, so, I'm cheering all of that because we have to be realistic about our expectations, especially when it comes to commercial development and, and retail and entertainment space in general. Um, I don't think the community's getting shortchanged when I look at this development. I, I kept the same slide up on, on my other computer here as I was going along. And we're talking about a, a, a development of the inside, the internal space of almost three times larger than what El Crowe just built. And their population nearly double our size. Um, you know, thi- this idea also that we're rushing through this, when the city was trying the eminent domain and developed this site years before I was even on council. And I've been here for nine years. Um, so, this isn't being rushed. The city has been dreaming, David even said, has been dreaming about doing something at this corner for, before we were a city. There's been hope of doing something and activating something here. And for a long time, it had, it was never going to have a public space. It was never going to have a public anything. We were hoping that the private developer and landowner would build something there. And the only thing that I heard he ever got close to was building a wingco with no parking. So, um, so as I'm looking at this, you know, and, and these are some of the things I even heard in, in, in the B that, you know, there was an argument about the fact that residents wouldn't be able to, like, like Rancho residents wouldn't be able to afford to buy these homes. If this is only catering to people that are outside of the city and can't move here. Well, that's one of the reasons that we put an affordable component in here. I, I appreciate the housing alliance showing up and talking about the, the virtues of that too. Because we don't want to just look at a project and say, "We want to gentrify this corner." And, you know, with all due respect to David talking about, and I have the exact same goal of catalyzing and sparking development on Folsom Boulevard. We need to make sure that the people that live here get, still get to benefit from that. They still have a place here that, we don't just develop it so that rents go up and everyone has to move somewhere else, which we've had those problems. You know, when we reduced crime and, and did heavy name, uh, neighborhood engagement on the Loma, you know what happened was crime went down. And so, all of the landlords started raising rents and all the people that we've been working with for eighteen months had to move out because they couldn't afford the rent anymore. So, we want to make sure that as we do this, that we include the people that still live here. Um, you know, and I've said this a lot before, my colleagues have heard this. Um, and I know that even some of the people that are, that are talking against the housing today, they were talking against BDX, they were calling it ghetto apartments. And, you know, I know what they were talking about and I know who they were talking about and who might live there and what those people might look like. Um, affordable housing is not cheap housing. If we're making reference to apartments that are on the Loma and in the surrounding areas, that's rundown, cheap apartments in multifamily housing. That is not what we're talking about here. We're talking about a market rate product with a subsidy to keep it affordable for working families and people, for our college students. We've talked about having, um, units that may be set aside for emancipated foster youth that are attending community college. Are we really opposed to that? I don't know, I'm not. Um, let me see. Going through some of my other notes here. Um, th- this development's never going to please everybody. But when we, but again, when we compare this to what else we're seeing in this region, and I've been to all of the other community centers that were referenced in the slide, uh, El Crowe, West Sac, Citrus Heights. Um, and, and Linda's very accurate about her comments that those spaces are active in the morning, they're active in the afternoon, maybe into the evening every once in a while. Um, but that's it. No one's there in the, in, in the evenings, they're not making a ton of noise or doing anything else. And, and why? There's no one that lives near these things. Mainly, I mean, if you go to Citrus Heights, it's next to a Walmart, the New City Hall, and the police station. That's it, and a medical center. It's a, it's completely in a commercial zone. Here, we're talking about a commercial zone next to a residential area, next to a light rail station, and next to a commercial corridor. So, why would we not want to mix all of those things together in what we're putting, putting, putting here? Um, I think some of the other uses that we've, we've heard tonight, senior center, youth center, um, library. I will remind you that those three things that I just said are all within a mile of this site. We're about to, to, to embark on a youth center that would address a lot of the, the ideas that have come up and, and a lot of the open space ideas that have come up. Um, we have a senior center just over the highway downward tier that's been there for years. Um, we do not run it, but should we be building a competing center less than a mile away? I don't think so. Um, a library, a very laudable idea. Um, would we move it less than a mile down the road and have now a vacant building on that side of town? Or do we try to take our library funds that we have and try to find a place more centered into the whole community? Not just up in the top left corner of, of the community. And again, to think that this would be everything to everyone. I mean, honestly, when they, when we first were proposed a hundred thousand square foot facility, I was really concerned. Because when, because I knew what the other sizes were of, of other community centers around here. And to think that we would be this ambitious, really when this is like a corner of the city, um, ma- made me nervous. But when talking with Corin and the rest of the development team and who they were looking at filling up this facility, I got a lot more confident that we could do it. Um, mainly because they found some really great potential partners that could pay rent, which makes a big deal about the overall function of this community center. Um, and you're right, David, we need to change the name. It's not a civic center. Um, keep in mind that there is also the potential of, of probably more than a hundred and something acre, uh, park community center within Rio de Oro at some point. Um, which is really going to be by the, by, by the time it's finished being developed, more of the center of the city than this site is. Um, that would likely have things like a library, a large aquatic center, um, a, a, another community center, another teen center. This is not the only community center we're ever going to build, it's just the first one. And I get the, 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 the concern of, "I gotta get my stuff now because I've been waiting for twenty years as a city and if I don't get it now, then I'm never going to get it." Right? Um, but that's, that's not reality. That we will continue to look at other sites and there is other land dedication coming in the new area that would, that would allow for this further development. Um, gonna kind of start to wrap up here. I will say that I would probably agree with David and Linda, um, Siri, I'm not sure if you exactly said it, but I would be open to a reduction in the number of condos to make way for maybe some additional open space. What I do find really fascinating is that, 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 I guess there are folks that are just a hundred percent opposed to any housing. I, I don't think I, I, I can please you there, I'm sorry. That, that's just, I'm going to disappoint you. If you, if you don't want any housing here, I, I, I just, I, I don't see any way forward to not having housing at this development. Um, that being said, reducing it to increase the open space, I would be open to. Um, but I do find it really fascinating, the people that are saying that people wouldn't want to live there because of the noise and the activity and everything. The point is, the people that are living there are going to be the activity in the evenings. They're going to activate these spaces, they're going to use the coffee shop and do their homework at the coffee shop or the market or whatever that is. They're the ones that are going to be there at eight, nine, ten o'clock at night. It's not, we're not going to have a bunch of late events there. Maybe every once in a while. But again, this wouldn't even be big enough to have the, the Christmas tree lighting there. Right? Even if we doubled the open space, it's not, it's not, it doesn't even get us close to, 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 uh, Village Green. Um, we're going to have to move that either to Hagan or to Rio de Oro when we finally have a, a, a very large fairgrounds almost. Um, but this idea that, that people are going to be opposed to living next to this when they, when they're going to choose to move in and know what they're moving in next to, um, it's kind of this argument that in a lot of communities, the people don't want to live next to light rail. But in Portland, they figure out how to do it. Why? Because they put the light rail in first and people moved next to light rail. They're not pissed off about hearing light rail because they moved there and they knew what they were getting themselves into, just like everyone that would be in these residences are going to know what they're getting themselves into. So, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if that argument holds water. But I'm open to some additional open space. But also, understand that that comes with its own issues. The, the, and Siri, you, I think you put it in a really good light. But having more residents there, especially at night, makes this a safer place. To have a whole bunch of open space, let's say we just built the community center and the rest of it was just all open space. And you're telling me that when the sun goes down in the fall and the winter at five o'clock, that we're not going to have problems with a bunch of open, fairly unlit site or, or open space right next to Folsom Boulevard? Look, look at the all, the already illegal commerce that we have going on in that neighborhood um, and, and the struggles that we've had. Um, to just place a whole bunch of open space there, I, I, is just begging for public safety issues. Um, and so, and, and, and frankly, it, it, you know, it's an attractive nuisance, you know? Um, where are homeless people now in the city? They're in the parkway where it's dimly lit, no one's there at night. Right? We don't want to, we don't want to build an attractive next to a light rail station and on Folsom Boulevard that just says, "Come here and you can camp." Um, and by the way, we don't have a lot of policing powers to move people very quickly that are doing that. Um, so, yeah, I, I, hopefully I've, I've addressed most of it. I mean, I, you know, I, I think there were some personal attacks there that I, I'd love to, to dispel of like the fact that I don't live any, I, I, I live more than a mile from the horrible housing development that somebody was talking about. And I wasn't necessarily opposed to it either. Um, the development that never showed up, so I had nothing to, to support. Um, and I've supported lots of affordable housing throughout the city. Um, so, yeah, I, I, as I look at this, I would be, I, I like the direction that we're going. Um, I'm pleased that, in my opinion, about half of the, the speakers and about half of the, the emails and correspondence that I've been getting um, have been supportive of this project and wanted to move forward. Um, not necessarily what I read on social media. So, I, I, I don't want to delay, I want to, I want to keep this going. I am open to a reduction in the condos for some additional, um, green space. Also, Corin, I would say that in looking at the site map, uh, the comments about counting the green space around the multifamily, um, if there was a way to not have as much of a buffer up, up against the street for that and to concentrate more of the green space towards the middle, um, in some way by either pushing the, again, pushing the buildings closer to the street or closer to, um, uh, sidewalks and bringing that green space closer to a, to a center to where you have them, um, clustered together, I think that would be great. Um, and then the other thing I would just point out, for those who didn't understand the, the mapping around closing down the street and using that as park space, event space, that these, I, I'm assuming the condos and the other housing units are alley-loaded. So, you're talking about, they're not going to park in front of their houses and drive through the front of their houses to their garage. None of these are going to have garages facing any of this. It's all going to be alley-loaded. So, if you shut down that street, they'd still be able to come in and out of the back of their homes, uh, to access it. And you just shut down the front and put food trucks and whatever else there. So, that is absolutely space that you account as community space because you're flexing the use of it. So, you may only do that ten times a year, I don't know. And then the rest of the time, it is a cut-through and, and, and a main thoroughfare for the rest of the community. But the, the residents will always still have access to it. And so, if you go back and look at that map, it makes complete sense what they're trying to do there. Um, yeah, I think I said enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, for myself, um, couple things. One, um, the VA is a hundred percent go because that's an easy solution. Like, we need to do that. And, and when we finally get a hold of Rancho Dova Airport, um, we'll put you, we'll build you something amazing over there. But that's, that's, you know, thirty-four thousand years down the road.
Approximately.
Yes.
Did you say thirty-four thousand?
Yeah. Just, just an estimate about how fast government runs. Um, yeah, uh, I want more green space, that's without question. We, we need that. Um, I, I thought one of the first one I liked, there's a bunch of green space over here and then they moved it to the middle. So, I want more so we can have a festival and stuff on there, so if that's doable. If it's not, I just need to know, like, a lot of the things I'm hearing from Fize and stuff is she just needs to hear numbers. She just wants calc's and numbers and, and why. So, if I could get numbers of why, if we can't do that, uh, if it's going to slow down us having these civic amenities on this, this, because it's critical that we have these pieces in our city. I mean, we've waited a long time for our own civic areas and a black box theater and stuff that's going to activate that space. Um, can we, I, I don't, I mean, I'm going to come out of left field. Can we have two stories? Is that doable? The, the, you saw, I'd like the housing. And I don't know which of our citizens brought that up, that they showed it and it was up on the top. And then, you know, it was business underneath and I thought that was kind of unique. I, I don't know if that's doable in the design, if we could have some of that? Just to kind of, uh, break it up a little bit. Because someone said, like, "Wouldn't it be cool if we had that and it would activate?" I don't want to throw a big old wrench, but I, I do, I do want to see that. And then, I, I am going to have to ask eventually where the numbers, like, just because they, now they've perked my interest. So, if we sell the condos, does that go to pay for the civic amenities? Is that how that works in this environment? I, I, I want to make sure about that. Or is it something that they're going to maintain and lease and it's some kind of association that always keeps its value? And so, that's technically the city's, uh, property? And then we're holding that forever and that's ours? And I just want to know about that. Is it like a, are we going to rent it? Are they now our landlords for our citizens and stuff like that? I don't, with the multifamily and stuff like that. Just questions. Um, uh, what else can go on? Um, those are the major pieces I'm concerned about. I am concerned that, that this group is, is, is worried about housing going on the space. So, we should answer their questions and, and I, I don't know if this is going to throw a wrench, but how much is it if we take the condos all away and just have multifamily housing on the corners? What would that do? You one time said that we should just, I mean, like at this point, because it's early, we can just look at it. I'm not saying disrupt everything, but what does that do to the price? Does that mean I can't build that? And now I'm out another 25 years because, or is that something that we could do? Or what's the minimal? Because I mean, at one time, Corin did say we could have this amount. But I don't, you know, green space isn't always the answer to me because I'm a little concerned because we can't even get. Some of the, our newest residents out of our parks right now. So I don't know what that's gonna, you know, next to the ba, you know what I'm saying, next to the baseball fields.
Where's homeless people on the Loma parked right now?
Right, you, you know, and I, I'm not trying to create that across from the light rail station. Though I do wanna activate it and I, and someone said like a TOT space.
What is your TOT space?
A transit oriented living space. So it'd be just that type of living space to attract people to go on the light rail. And, you know, the lower socioeconomics needs places for us to live in our city. It's just one, we need people to work. We are the work center and force of the area. But is it like, we're gonna put civic amenities there? Do I lose all the civic amenities if I put at all TOT space? I mean, I, I, but I wanna talk to my citizenry. I mean, I don't wanna put something they don't wanna have in that area. I mean, that's the whole point. They moved in Rancho. It's supposed to be improving. So, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I, just Mr. America, a couple of things to consider. I think part of this is a little bit of trying to figure out the chicken and the egg of trying to run all of those different scenarios and numbers and getting to a place to be able to do that.
Right.
I think when you think about the, um, and we talked about this, I think previously about the multifamily and, and kind of the financial feasibility of doing.
Right.
Uh, market rate apartments there was, um, questionable, I think. And that's where kind of the transition moved to the for sale product and still an urban environment. And so I think that's part of the decision or by the direction of going what was feasible. And actually Bill Witty probably can answer some of those questions directly from Related because he builds all of it.
Just for my own edification, Micah, it's those condos, when they sell. Are they, is that money then given to the city to produce for the thing or is that, how does that work?
I think part of this too, and it goes to the next phase of this conversation is really the transactional piece on how all of this is gonna come together. And so it's really hard to answer it fundamentally without looking at the whole picture.
Okay.
And I think we're of all intentions to come back and have that fully vetted conversation about what that future transaction will look like.
All right.
But it's got to start from a place of agreement or of, of direction that we can actually build those models and, and have those conversations. But the fully intent of the project, this is the city's property. So this is the city's property to decide how to transact it in the future. So this isn't anybody's, you know, kind of private development. This is really trying to do what's best for the development to make the impact on the corridor. And I think part of the question by Councilmember Poole Potty about the, the phasing of it, you could always phase this. But what, you know, my background's in economic development, so I'm always gonna look for the biggest bang of the buck of the project. And really, that's really my focus. But if you wanna talk about phasing, those things can all happen in the conversation. But it really is going to limit the amount of impact that this project's having on the boulevard. So I think those are all conversations we can have. But it's really a part of the financial transaction, which is next step, which is probably. What Corin's gonna lead you to through the next couple of slides as far as where we go from here. But I am hearing some direction from council about the reduction of the number of. Uh, residential, uh, townhome units to provide some open space. I think we've heard that pretty clearly from the council. And so I think that's something, as far as the model that comes back, we'll include some of that.
Right.
But ultimately, I think Corin can walk through the next step of, of what the kind of conversation.
Let's make sure open space doesn't necessarily mean park space. It can be something different because I wanna be careful about what we in, in, put into that area. It's a very sensitive ecosystem of Rancho Cordova. And we, we invest so much on the, our, that side of Rancho Cordova. I mean, all the new civic center, the new kids center, and we just have to make sure that whatever we do. Really a- advances that area of Rancho Cordova and brings the amenities that they've always wanted.
And that's the balance we're trying to stretch of what's delivering the most economic impact with balancing the community facility and trying to provide that for the community. So I think, I think as someone said early on, I think we're all trying to get to the same goal here. It's just how that happens, I think, is, is, is where the.
Right, and also it's all about, it's also, I mean, I'm very concerned about timing. Like, if I don't do this, does this add 30 years? And then I'm gonna already have Rio de Oro and all that stuff tilted up with the amenities that I need? Or if I do this and do this, I can have this right now? Like, Corin, when you're, when you're putting these, these steps together for us, that's the kind of questions I wanna know.
Yeah.
And then if it's like, my citizens are like, no, hell no, you're not putting that there. Then it's okay. So then, then I gotta come to them because I wanna be able to tell them the truth, right? Very transparent and be like, look, if we don't do this, then you don't get this. Is this okay? And if they're like, yeah, that's okay, then, you know, that's the kind of stuff I wanna do. So take me through the next steps, Corin.
Okay, sounds good. Um, so yeah, Abby, thank you. So in terms of next steps, um, we, you've seen this slide before. And we like to show this slide just in terms of context of where we've been and where things are going. Yeah, all the way back from 2018 and all of the, the work that's occurred. The RFP process in 2019 and 2020. And then the work that we've been doing for the last year and kind of where we generally feel like we are in the overall process itself. Um, but let's look at the next slide where we can talk about kind of what the process is moving forward. And how it generally comes together. So during the E and A period, August 2020 of last year. Um, which, and we project, you know, as an aspirational goal somewhere towards the end of 2021. Um, we're really, we've really been involved in three major components of work. We've spent a lot of time talking about what you see on the left-hand side, the master plan, concept, design. Um, this, this is the preferred development option that we've talked about. And we've also talked about, um, the flexibility within all of that. And making relative adjustments to the amount and quantities of the different elements that you see in the master plan. That's all, you look, I mean, this has been a great debate. You know, it's been a great set of comments, uh, representing a whole variety of different, uh, preferences and issues that we hear from the public. From the council, uh, from our designers. And, um, and it is very consistent with what, what, where we've, what we've talked about. Which is to say that preferred development option that you approved is not the final final. It's not etched in stone. There are ways and, and certainly feasible to make those types of adjustments where we explore more open space. Uh, we explore a reduction of housing. Um, we, you know, we continue to look at the various programming suggestions like the Veterans Center. Um, so that's, that's where we are with the master plan, uh, concept. The other is programming and partnerships. Um, because, you know, as I said, you, you know, the eighty to a hundred thousand square feet of, you know, top notch, first rate. Uh, community center space is a very expensive project. Um, it's ambitious, it's doable, but it's a very expensive project. So some of this is just simply, um, you know, identifying the right partners that, uh, help the project, uh, go along. So that certain aspects of the project can be, um, free or incredibly low cost. For all the different commercial, uh, community uses that, that we're seeking for. So we have conversations planned around programming and partnerships as part of this process. Um, and those are, you know, as we calendar things, those are conversations that we'd like to have sooner rather than later. Um, August, September, you know, as soon as, as soon as, as soon as you'd like. And then the last would be, once we, and, and then, so the project agreements, you signing projects agreements or sort of saying, okay, now we're ready to execute agreements and move forward. All of that includes, I think, the third bullet that you see, approve project agreements and financing plan. Um, final project development plan, end of the E and A period. So there is a great degree of work and dialogue along the lines of the financing plan and the costs. And the feasibility of the, of the project in general. That's all generally planned, uh, as part of this. And we would hope that that would be something that could occur in November or before or somewhere kind of Q four of 2021. Um, once that happens, we would be going into pre-development. Pre-development is where we've selected, we, we have a more, um, fine tuned plan. That we start doing all of the different, um, architectural design and project approvals, environmental approvals. The traffic studies, um, the greenhouse gas studies, the, you know, water studies, all the sustainability planning. All that detailed work really occurs to a great degree during pre-development. Um. Some of those things, and so we, you know, I, the, the, the site plan that we've been viewing so far is all conceptual. It's, um, it's space quantities, it's layouts, it's boxes. No architecture has been done. And when we get to schematic design, you know, one of the best practices that we like to do is really looking at collaborative design processes with city council and community. One good example is a potential city council ad hoc design committee. Where the interested council members can, uh, participate more frequently into establishing a set of design guidelines and standards. Architectural standards for what the project ultimately wants to be and look like. Um, more detailed facility needs assessment. And then we start to get more in-depth into the building level design and the, um, the landscape design, right? Like Rios works with, um, sub consultants that specifically design water features. And so the water feature component of the public space can come into much greater fidelity. In addition to the arc, general architectural aesthetic, the building aesthetic, um, the facades, the glazing. Um, the size of the building, right? The mixed use format of the building, all of that building level design would occur during pre-development. So that, that to me is, 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 is the process moving forward.
When would we have like the partners and the money? Like, when it, when does that happen? When, is that in November that you would have partners lined up? Then they would tell me why they need the condos and, and how it applies to the civic.
Well, one, one thing to really keep in mind is that the, um, the preliminary financing model that we have run and shown. Is not, does not factor in the housing into that, right? So the housing is not the economic driver to make the, uh, com- community facilities work. Um, so that is something that we, we've addressed that in the community, uh, workshop sessions that we did in the last two weeks. And I think that just that, that has to be a consistent part of the communication. Is to say that the housing functions on its own. City of Rancho Cordova.
Boy, that is a huge point that I think has been missed by the public.
Right, city of Rancho Cordova taxpayer dollars. City of Rancho Cordova taxpayer dollars are not going towards the housing. It's targeted towards the community facilities. Um, so.
And also, but the, then the flip side of it, the project doesn't require the housing from a financial point of view.
No.
Right, and it's really about, the housing is really a part of the right urban design and characteristics of catalyzing the, the, the development along Folsom Boulevard. Not a part of the financial model to make sure you can make all of this work. It's really about doing the right catalyst type project is why you include the housing, not necessarily. A way to pay for anything in the, in the future community center. Now that all those financials will be worked out when the time comes, but, um, that it's really about doing the, the right project.
In terms of partnerships to your question, um, that second bullet under the programming and partnerships item, it says programming and tenancy plan. That's essentially what that, that, that addresses. What, what is the whole, what does it all look like? And I'll tell you that the, for a, a, a project like this, the programming and partnership concept. Is somewhat conceptually similar to how retail works, like retail centers. So retail centers typically secure an anchor, right? And that anchor tenant or two anchor tenants are your sort of larger, um, more, you know, they would be more to, your larger, longer term institutions. For that particular facility. And then you have a lot of smaller scale, in the retail world, they call them inline shops. But in this case, for community facilities, they would just be smaller scale users of those facilities. Your anchors tend to have more of the, um, more of a, a financing, you know, they, they have more financial strength, I would say. And so we would think that, for instance, like the health and wellness users, maybe some sports users. Those potential partners have more, um, financial strength. We can analyze their balance sheet, their sort of, you know, their, 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 all their financial, you know, uh, financial statements. Their income statement, their cash flow, cash on hand, their, what their debt looks like. All of that kind of element goes into figuring out who your strong partners are. And those are the anchors of the project over time. And then your more inline users are, you know, could be smaller scale nonprofits that might, um, you know, that might. That might, uh, be, uh, s- shorter term tenants. Maybe they are tenants for two, three years, five years or the like. There could be more turnover typically that you see in that type of model. Whereas your anchors are more of your longer term institutions for a project anchoring the, the project over time. And that's just the re, you know, that's just sort of like the reality of different types of partners that would come and go. That, um, that, that, um, that, that, that we would have to identify over time.
All right.
Wha- what I am hearing, I think, is an interest is when we come back to some of the financing plans and finance agreement is have some. I don't know what they call them, Alcart kind of options to kind of look through so that when there's, that time comes that there's some. Ability to not just look at one financial plan for a particular model, but ways to maybe look at different options for. Uh, how to add or take away different, different pieces to it that might be helpful for that. And it might come in stages. It won't be just, this is the last one, but we might have to do those in some stages of what that looks like. But some of that is built on who the partners are and what the ultimate kind of financials are. So those, those will be conversations to come, but I am hearing some interest in some of those conversations about kind of. Having some options when it comes to the financing for, for putting pieces in and out.
All right.
Micah, on our, on our way to November, and November looks like, you know, where you would actually have a vote by the council to say, yeah, here's our agreement. Let's go. There's still design that happens after that.
Absolutely. Actually, a whole lot more.
But November, November, November is sort of the commitment, yeah, we're doing something here, right?
Right.
That's the, that's what I'm saying there. So what we've heard tonight are an enormous number of questions from the public. And frankly, I view that as really valuable. I know it was painful for people, annoying for people. A lot of emotions, uh, uh, perhaps, but there's a ton of, I mean, I have pages of notes here of, of questions. What can we do between now and then to answer as many of those questions as possible? Or engage all those residents who have concerns about this? Because I think, you know, that's not just a be nice if, that's sort of an obligation that we have. To, to engage people and answer all those questions that they're, that they're voicing about this.
I, and I think we can think about that. I think we've, you know, started some of that dialogue with the community meetings we had, you know, over the last couple of weeks. And I think, you know, we can think about what that looks like moving forward from a community outreach and conversation as new information comes in. I think one of the hardest conversations that we're gonna have to have is when it comes to actually doing the transactional pieces around the tenants and, and who the tenants are. Um, we might have to be a little vague in some of those conversations. Um, as you say, sometimes we could lose tenant deals or whatever if there's particular users out there. Um, ultimately, it has to come to council for full discussion, but I think those are the ones that will be the hardest for us to have in full disclosure. Um, when it comes to talking about those tenants, that will be more about a real property type of transaction. But, um, ultimately, we'll have to be able to talk about that publicly in, in some way. Um, but I think we can look at the model that we use for those public input meetings to move forward with, to make sure we're getting the information out there. And, and pe- people's information is being heard.
Excellent. Yes, certainly. I mean, I think that we would expect to, um, answer the questions. Uh, we can do it and just dialogue with, uh, with the city and the public around different ma- ways in which we answer those questions. We can prepare facts, we can post those on, online, we can do more live community sessions. Um, so there, there are options for the continued dialogue. It's just clear that continued dialogue is really valuable and it's necessary.
Most, most important thing with everything is over-communication. Let's over-communicate to the point where they know everything and to the point they can make a decision. Now it might not be the same as some of the council members up here, but at least my citizens know everything to the point where they're, they're bored of it. Ad nauseam. Like, I want them to become here knowing more than me. So we're gonna fix that. That's gonna happen and all the questions. So. That's great.
You know, can I, can I weigh in there really quick too? I, I would also say that, um, as we talk about, because I know there's been some questions about community surveys and how that worked. And, uh, you know, I think there's some valid points there about, um, penetrating and working with the, our, our neater communities. There are folks that, uh, speak a foreign language, um, or a, a language other than English. Um, that, we also take some time and I don't, I, you know, I, I don't know. I know we've done community surveys and, and other things like that. But if there's any way to do some, some more scientific stuff than just kind of push polls where everyone on Facebook decides that they're gonna push everybody towards this website and. Facebook decides that they're going to push everybody towards this website and, and, you know, send us a note or fill out, fill out a survey so that, you know, it's weighted towards their interest. Um, but really getting at the heart of what people necessarily want here and don't want. Um, and I'm not saying like housing or not, right? Because, you know, we're still looking at a community facility that's much larger than the regional standard. Um, but what are those other kind of nuances? Because like, it, it's really interesting that, you know, as we've gone through this process, this is really the first time that I've had, like, I've noticed a collective group, um, wanting to talk about the VFW, um, which is easily solvable. Um, emails would have been enough, like I said. Um, so it'd be interesting to also, you know, look at something that is scientifically representative of the community, not just, here's a website, and for those of you that don't like this project, go here and tell them that you don't like it, and for those of you who do like it, go there and tell them what you like. Um, to me, that doesn't help me understand what the, the actual community cares about when it comes to this.
I, I just want to second that enormously. You took the words out of my mouth, Tom, with regard to some kind of a survey of the community, asking that question, uh, again, because, you know, we had so many, uh, points made tonight, and we could say things like Taylor Park really needs a redo, you know? It needs bathrooms, it needs better facilities, it's, it's not well amenitized at all for its function, and it's not functioning well. Um, we could say that, but we don't know that's the priority of the neighborhood. That's, that would be my guess of the priority, but I'd like to hear more about that. I mean, I would say right now that, uh, a better library facility might make sense at some point in the future, sort of as you did previously, but the children's museum is also a key thing, you know? We want to, we want to be sure we have that. If I had my druthers, both of those would be located here. I just don't think financially we can make, we can make that work. But we can make it work elsewhere, and if we have a really good priority list, we can, we can chase that.
Well, and, and capacity wise too, right? David, like, I know you were really passionate about the idea of, uh, a really large performing art center here, right? And I think, you know, there are people that were saying, well, you, you're not going to be able to have like Broadway plays here. Well, we were clearly given the study that said that's not feasible here.
Right.
Right? We're, we can't just drop the Mandavi Center on this corner and make it work, right? And as somebody who serves on the board of, of the children's museum, I can tell you right now, they are not capable of operating a 20 or 30,000 square foot facility.
Right, right.
12,000 square feet can be a stretch for them, and they're not paying rent right now to the city.
Yep.
So when you look at the capacity, so again, the questions, th- they are somewhat fairly loaded because it's not just like, what do you want? It's also, what, what is realistic, right? Just because, just because we want a, a, you know, a safe credit union community, you know, uh, playhouse like they have in downtown Sacramento, because some of us like, you know, don't want to have to drive downtown, that doesn't mean there's enough people to get, you know, Hamilton to be here, right?
Yeah, but use a, use a polling instrument that will actually force people to make decisions, you know? You've got a hundred million dollars to spend, how are you going to spend it? Back, or whatever, whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. But yeah, I, I, I would, I would like to see something that is more scientifically representative than is, than is something that is driven through social media to get the answer that those, that those individuals driving it are, are getting.
All right, excellent. So Cyrus, would you like to end it for us?
Uh, just to, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to be, um, make sure that we, uh, have captured everything correctly. I think as, uh, pointed out, we, we have some homework to do, we have some next steps to do. The conversation tonight has been absolutely, uh, informative and productive to move us, move us along. Uh, one of the things that I would like for the council and the community to be, uh, uh, certain of, that we have, regardless of the initial cost of this project, whatever it ends up being, we have set aside 35 million and, uh, the actual cost, the number may be 38 million, maybe 30, 32 million, we don't know yet. Uh, but that's definitely part of the, our due diligence and being the stewards of the public funds. And rest assured, council, that, uh, we will not bring a project to you that even if we can afford today, afford that today, is something that we will not be able to sustain or afford in the long run. Uh, that's been, that's my job, that's something that I will take very seriously. Uh, and we have an amazing track record of this in this community. We have, uh, we are, um, very comfortable and I'm very pleased to say to the public and to our city, city council that we are probably financially the healthiest city in this region, and it's just not by happenstance. We've been, the council and, and, uh, staff have been, uh, very diligent in doing their homework. So, and I think, you know, the process, the next steps and what we need to take this from here now, uh, it's a, really a question of understanding enough about a concept or proposal before we can do our due diligence. We, we, I cannot, um, put, put ourselves in a position having to, having to do some hypothetical, uh, evaluation, uh, to, and come up with some estimates that may or may not be true. We need to understand what the vision is and, and prepare yourself, we may come to you and say, this is a great vision, but it doesn't pencil. It's, uh, this is, you would expect that of us, we will do that, we will take it seriously, and we certainly don't, don't want to mislead the community and the council in, on a path that may not be sustainable. So, so that's part of the next steps, but that's part of the process, and it's the same thing with every, everything else, you know, you, there is no way that we could embark a sequel analysis without having a project description. We, we, we have to have, understand what the project is. The same thing is true about a financial feasibility study. We can do some high level estimates, we can do some, some high level, uh, financial feasibility analysis, but we're not there yet. We need to, um, better understand what the project is, what the vision is, and we have a very high level and broad view of it, but there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. So, so this is something I just want to make sure that everybody is clear about, that ultimately, when we put our name and our reputation behind a project, is something that is, uh, uh, not only good for the community, and we think, you know, that this mixed use design is something we are proposing, not because it's a, but it's driven by money or finances, because it's what makes sense. This is what, well, this is what modern planning is all about. This is, this is something that has proven to be successful in many other communities. But the end, at the end of the day, if we are taking public tax dollars, we have to do our due diligence, and we will do that.
Excellent, thank you. All right, moving on. 12.3.
I vote for Linda for the design committee.
I, I'm going to have a, I'm going to have a brand new design committee of my citizens soon.
Well, we need really good architecture on this project, so yeah.
Thank you for your time, guys.
And thanks, and thanks to Corn and the rest of the development team.
Thank you for showing up, Corn.
Your work over the last 18 months on this.
All right, Stacy, do you want to read the first subject?
Um, the subject for item 12.3 is appointment of real property negotiators. Cyrus Abhar, city manager, Albert Stricker, public works director, and Adam U. Lindgren, city attorney. The property address is 3355 Monir Circle. Assessor's parcel number is 072-1010-029.
All right, can I go ahead and have Adam Lindgren's staff report?
Move approval. Yeah, second.
All in favor? Stacy roll call.
Hi.
In the old days, we could just do it.
Count, council.
Every other body, we can do it.
Councilmember Pula Potty?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Hi.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood?
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, can we go to, um...
We're going to leave here and go to close session, right?
We're going to go to close session? All right, we're going to go ahead and, and, uh, adjourn the meeting to close session.
It's going to be fast, right?
Super fast.
Uh, is, is Gary not coming back yet? Let's, um, yeah, we'll call it back.
I, I wasn't sure that.
Do we need to take quorum or, uh, take roll?
We have Councilmember Terry, Councilmember Pula Potty, and Councilmember Sander present.
Okay, let's have a report out from close session, please.
Thank you. This evening, the city council, uh, had a close session with real property negotiators and received information from and provided direction to its real property negotiators on the posted agenda item, and, uh, the mayor just re-entered and heard that item and should be reflected in the, in the roll call.
There is.
And we have no other report out.
Meeting adjourned.
At 11:17. Good night, everyone.
All right.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, Cyrus, thank you.